One, two, three.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Economy and Development Select Committee. It's Tuesday, the fourteenth of December, 2021. Welcome, everybody. This meeting is to discuss the Replacement Local Development Plan. We're going to consider the implications of the Welsh Government's letter on future housing provision. We've got a number of speakers today who'll speak under the open public forum. For everyone's benefit, the Select Committee cannot make any decision today, but can debate policy. Just to let you know what the structure is, there'll be an officer presentation to start with, then there'll be public open forum, allowing each speaker three minutes, after which the public are welcome to stay and observe the meeting. We then move to member debate and questions of offices, and then I'll conclude. I've received apologies for today's meeting from councillors Ruth Edwards, councillor Peter Clark, councillor Tony Easton, Malcolm Lane, Maureen Powell, Jane Pratt, Penny Jones, Dave Evans, and Peter Fox. I'll take declarations as and when. So we now proceed to Agenda Item Number Three. This is listed as an agenda as the public open forum, but I've explained that we'll hear from the officer presentation first as part of Agenda Item Number Four, and then hold the public open forum before members debate it. So I now hand over to Mark Hand, who's the Head of Placement, Housing and Planning, to take us through the presentation. Mark, over to you.
Thanks, Chair. Good afternoon, members. Good afternoon, guests and viewers. Actually, pass to my colleague Craig O'Connor, who's Head of Planning, to take us through the presentation. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. If I can just bear with me while I share my screen. Can someone please indicate whether they can see that?
Yeah, Craig, yeah, Craig.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, councillors. Thank you for this special Economic Development Select Committee to discuss Welsh Government's response to Mammothshire's Replacement Local Development Plan and the preferred strategy outlining the level of growth that Mammothshire proposes over the 15-year period. This presentation is just going to outline to you as councillors, where we are at this stage in the process and the items of discussion, really, in terms of how the council progresses with the Replacement Local Development Plan, given the concerns that have been raised by Welsh Government to the level of growth. So firstly, this slide just outlines how we've got to where we are in terms of the development of the preferred strategy. So the preferred strategy is underpinned by clear evidence around 38 different issues, and it's underpinned by the local wellbeing plan. The evidence included within the strategy is outlined within an integrated sustainability appraisal, sustainable settlement appraisal, underpinned by Future Wales, particularly policies four, five, and seven. The LDP test of soundness, which is outlined in the development manual, and the Welsh Government's Building Better Places document. The Replacement Local Development Plan's issues, visions, and objectives were approved by the council's cabinet in May 2019, and they were also reviewed in line with the council's climate emergency declaration in July 2019, and in light of the pandemic in June 2020. There are seventeen objectives, which are grouped to reflect the wellbeing goals, and some of the core issues which have been identified in Mammothshire within the future, over the next 15 years, is the delivery of affordable housing, a demographic balance, and the climate emergency. So there's certainly three core areas which this local development plan needs to address. So the preferred strategy is based on population-led scenario, based on the desired population profile in 2033, and the number of homes and jobs that required the support and sustain existing communities. And suggested, the model's been adjusted to reflect reductions in migration rates, to reflect local trends over the last five years, increasing household formation rates to reduce the amount of people who are living with their parents or in shared households, and reducing commuting ratio to encourage more people in the county to get employment, and reduce out commuting. This is also in line with the Welsh Government's target of having 30% of people working from home in the future. Within the preferred strategy, there's also a direct policy to address that key issue of delivering affordable housing. So we've added a policy-led element to deliver additional homes supported by the Welsh Minister in letters to councils in July 2019 and November 2021. And these sites will include at least 50% affordable housing. Now, in the strategy, that comes for 1,410 additional homes, and of those homes, 705 would be affordable houses. The preferred strategy provides the strategic direction for development and land use for the period 2018 to 2033. It proposes, the strategy proposes, 7,605 homes, of which approximately 2,169 will be affordable. And it provides a policy framework to enable the council to provide up to over 7,215 jobs. It'll also have policies to protect landscape. The strategy was endorsed by council on 24th of June 2021 for statutory consultation between the 5th of July to the 31st of August 2021. As part of this consultation process, we received a response from Welsh Government outlining four areas of concern with the preferred strategy. And these four areas are outlined in the slide in front of you. There was an absence of four evidence-based papers relating to strategic site delivery, high-level site-specific viability appraisal, renewable energy assessment, and the gypsy and travel assessment. This evidence base is all in hand to inform the deposit plan, and we have deliberately sequenced the work in this way. That information will be available for the deposit plan. There was also some really helpful guidance in relation to some of the strategic policies, and to how we word them and how we move them forward in the deposit plan, and that is really welcomed. There was concerns about delivery of unemployment aspirations in terms of the economic prosperity that we were trying to, which we are seeking to achieve in Mammothshire. Again, those concerns are noted, and it's something that we are working with as a council to ensure that we address that economic prosperity. And the last point is an objection to the proposed housing growth of 7,605 homes. The council, and Welsh Government, has outlined a proposed maximum growth of between 2,610 and 4,275 homes is needed. And this objection is based on the underlying opinion that Mammothshire's proposed growth level will impact on future Wales 2040's national growth area, comprising Newport, Cardiff, and the South Wales Valleys. And this is the area and the point within the letter that is the item of discussion today, is the concern on the level of growth, particularly the number of homes that have been outlined within Mammothshire's preferred strategy. So this slide just outlines and compromises, outlines really what, and illustrates what Welsh Government's concerns are with Mammothshire's preferred strategy. It's considered to be, this preferred strategy is not said to be in general conformity with Future Wales, and the Mammothshire's Replacement Local Development Plan must provide a lower level of housing. The Welsh Government principal housing projection for the planned area, 2,610 units, provides a starting point for the level of housing required. In recognition, a build rate achieved over the last 10 years, a higher level of housing may be justified. The imposed level of housing growth should however be no greater than 4,275 units, plus an appropriate flexibility allowance. This will ensure that Mammothshire continues to grow in a sustainable manner based on a locally appropriate level of development, which is compatible with Policies One and Thirty-Three of Future Wales. So in that statement, you can see that there is a prescribed level of growth that's been outlined, which outlines that Mammothshire should not be growing any greater than 4,275 homes, and that is the point of discussion and direct conflict with where Mammothshire's preferred strategy is at this stage. So as outlined in the report, there were a number of concerns with this level of growth that's been outlined, and the consultation response that are all up for discussion as for members today to talk through the implications of what this letter does mean for members' Replacement Local Development Plan, and what you as members want to deliver for the citizens of Mammothshire. So as outlined within the report, these are some of the concerns. In terms of the status of Welsh Government's letter, Welsh Government add statutory consultancy on this, on the development of the Replacement Local Development Plan. They are an important consultancy in terms of outlining the level of growth that is appropriate for Mammothshire. However, they are a consultancy. The Replacement Local Development Plan will be determined in an examination by the planning environment decisions for Wales. The second item for discussion is the appropriateness of Welsh Government prescribing a maximum growth level on a local planning authority. The preferred strategy is based on evidence meeting local needs, including issues identified within the local wellbeing plan. Page 15 of Future Wales states that Future Wales does not seek to take decisions that are most appropriately taken at the regional or local level. It provides strategic direction for all scales of planning and sets up policies and key issues to be taken forward at the regional scale. It does not seek to identify the exact location for new developments or the scale of growth in individual settlements. The regional and local tiers are the most appropriate level at which to take these decisions involving communities as they do. Select Committee is invited to consider whether or not the Welsh Government's desire to focus growth on Newport, Cardiff, and the Valleys limits growth in Mammothshire, whether that addresses the needs in a local context in Mammothshire. Thirdly, the appropriateness of using past build rates to plan future growth and to address local issues. The Welsh Government dwelling requirement of 4,275 is based on past 10-year build rates in the county. And the Select Committee is invited to consider the appropriateness of using build rates. As we all know, there are fluctuations in building properties in the construction industries, and there are economic cycles that the UK has gone through. Consequently, past build rates simply replicate what has been allowed to happen in the past, essentially planning forwards and looking backwards. The 10-year past build rates used by Welsh Government include a period constrained by the aftermath of the 2008 economic recession, as well as the preparation of the current LDP to replace the previous UDP. AMAS at the moment are clearly indicating the past five years are more reflective of the reality as the LDP allocated sites are delivered and unconstrained by external influences. The fourth item to discuss is the general conformity with Future Wales 2040. And Welsh Government have outlined that the level of growth outlined within the preferred strategy isn't complying with conformity with Future Wales. However, there is a direct consideration that one of, that the Future Wales needs to be read as a whole, as a complete document, and there are specific policies within Future Wales that Mammothshire's preferred strategy is tackling in terms of supporting rural communities, supporting the rural economy, and delivering affordable houses. And that needs to be balanced against other policies within the plan within Future Wales, such as the level of growth. Paragraph 3.5, 3.5.5.9 clearly outlines this, outlining would the level of growth this outlines within Mammothshire's preferred strategy undermine Future Wales and Welsh Government's desire to focus growth in Cardiff, Newport, and the Valleys. I think that's something for Economic Development Select to consider. Would the level of growth outlined within this strategy, which directly impacts on addressing local issues, does it undermine Future Wales and other areas? Fifthly, the test of soundness, is the plan considered to be, would the plan considered to be sound? This is to be examined by an independent inspector when you get to the informal examination process. The tests of soundness are clearly outlined within the development manual, and whether the plan is locally specific, whether the level of growth addresses key evidence-based local issues, whether the plan is supported by robust proportionate incredible evidence, whether the plan would meet assess needs and contribute to sustainable developments, and is the plan's vision and strategy are positive and sufficiently aspirational? Does it do what it needs to do? And that would be all be tested examination. And the question is, does Welsh Government's level of growth, does it meet those tests of soundness as we move forward? The last point on this slide is the origin of Future Wales 2040 population projections for the region. This focuses on population projections aiming Future Wales 2020. But the Welsh Government's response to Mammothshire's strategy focuses on those projections, and their housing need figures are not the same as housing requirement figures, the latter being the result of applying outcome-based policy adjustments and aspirations to tackle those local issues, as I've outlined. It's worth noting that Welsh Government projections are part of the evidence base, along with the LHMA and wellbeing plan, when considering the housing requirements. They are not the starting point when considering the housing requirements. This is as odds with the advice in the letter, which refers to the preferred strategy housing requirement figure being 4,995 dwellings above the Welsh Government principal projections. This slide outlines the implications of Welsh Government's maximum growth level of 4,275 homes on the content of the Replacement Local Development Plan. As set out in paragraph 3.10, the existing housing requirements into... Sorry, we have a commiss, apologies, we have a housing supply of 4,708. And in paragraph 3.10 of the report, it breaks down this housing, what this housing requirement is breaking down from, some existing commitments and allowances. So 1,218 homes already completed between 2018 and 2021, given where we are to date. 1,642 homes on site that already have planning permission and are realistically accepted to come forward. 300 homes on three adopted LDP sites that are still progressing for the system. 533 homes on windfall sites, and 995 homes on small sites. So altogether, we already have a housing requirement of 4,708. So if you look at this, at this plan, you can see if we were to go with Welsh Government's proposed maximum growth level, there would be no need for additional housing locations, new housing allocations. We would just be using the existing allocations within the existing LDP, because that level of growth is already established. So it would mean that we wouldn't be allocating any new land for residential development within a replacement local development plan. So Economic and Development Select really do have to consider today whether the maximum level of growth for 4,275 homes does achieve the LTP's objective to deliver affordable housing. Mammothshire's preferred strategy would deliver approximately 2,169 affordable homes. 961 of these are within existing committed housing supplies, so within that 4,000 I've just mentioned. Without any new land allocations, there can be no supply to support different delivery models, such as council-led development company proposals. We need land to be allocated to bring that residential development and that affordable housing forward. This does conflict with objectives within Policy Seven of Future Wales 2040, and also conflicts with the Welsh Minister's letters of July 2019 and November 2021, which specifically looks for councils to address the affordable housing challenge within Wales. There's always all the implications of the Welsh Government's maximum growth level of 4,275 homes on the economic prosperity of Mammothshire's communities. It's quite clear that we have an aging demographic within Wales. Paragraph 3.36 of the report outlines the UK Competitives Index in 2021, which is a measure of long-run potential of locality, cities, and regions to generate economic growth and well-played employment. Mammothshire's ranked second in Wales in that index, and 147 in the UK for competitiveness, compared to third in Wales, and 158 in the UK in 2018. This just highlights how prosperous Mammothshire could be, and is already achieving, and whether the level of growth this outline within this, within Welsh Government's level of growth would actually hinder that economic prosperity. The implications of the Welsh Government's maximum growth level of 4,275 homes on achieving the core objective of greater demographic balance. One of the key objectives of this Replacement Local Development Plan and the preferred strategy is to ensure that we do balance our demography by ensuring that we do have a more economically active age group living within Mammothshire and contributing to the economic prosperity of the county. These next few graphs outline what each option would do, what the preferred strategy would do, Mammothshire's existing preferred strategy would do, and also what Welsh Government's population projection would do in terms of the different age cohorts, in terms of how it would influence the demographic of Mammothshire in 2033. So this first slide outlines Mammothshire's preferred strategy, so the delivery of 7,605 homes, with new allocations being 2,897. From this graph, you can see there on the right, the bar graph, you can see how it does influence the demographic, in particularly the age range from 30 to 49, increasing that economically active age range, and also an increase in regards to the younger population. On the right, we do have an aging demographic in the UK, not just within Mammothshire and in Wales as a whole. So you would naturally see that additional growth in those areas. This shows the difference with the Welsh Government prescribed 4,275 option. So here you can see how that would influence in terms of the different age cohorts and the age demographic of Mammothshire in 2033. You can also see that there'd be no new allocations, and potentially we'd have a surplus of 433 homes that we'd be delivering over this period, even based on the existing land allocations that we have. This graph outlines what would happen to the school age population over the planned period. So the blue line is the preferred strategy, and the orange line is the Welsh Government's prescribed 10-year past rate line. This next slide shows the working age population, and this is for the whole of the Unitary Authority area, so the whole of Mammothshire, and not just the local planning authority. And it does show the blue line, the preferred strategy, so you can see the increase there in terms of the working age population, and the Welsh Government's projection is below that. This is the 65 and over population. As you can see, there's not much difference here between the graphs. We do have an aging population, the preferred strategy is slightly above, but this just highlights what that would do in terms of the aging demographic in Mammothshire over that planned period. So Economy and Development Select Committee, a question for five main queries here to consider. So consider the views of the people who have engaged in the public forum, which we'll be hearing from next, in terms of the considerations of our communities and people within the development industry. The extent to which the Welsh Government maximum growth level will address the key housing affordability issues in the county. The extent to which the Welsh Government maximum growth level will address the objective of attracting and retaining younger people, increasing the economically active population, and creating a more balanced demographic. Whether or not the Welsh Government's desire to focus growth on Newport, Cardiff, and the Valleys by limiting growth in Mammothshire will achieve leveling up or leveling down. Whether or not the Welsh Government's desire to focus growth on Newport, Cardiff, and the Valleys by limiting growth in Mammothshire addresses the wellbeing in Mammothshire's communities, including the wellbeing of current and future generations. And does it have to be a choice between Mammothshire or the national growth area? Would the preferred strategy prejudice the delivery of Future Wales 2040? Does the level of growth outlined in the preferred strategy harm the delivery of Future Wales and the prosperity of the national growth area? They are main things, I think, to consider from discussions today. And that's the end of the presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much for that presentation, Craig. We'll now proceed with the public open forum. I'll call upon the representatives of the appropriate organisations and individuals to come forward. The first speaker is Mark Harris. He's the Planning and Policy Advisor of the Home Builders Federation. So, Mark, if you can present.
Thank you, Chair. Would you like me to turn my camera on? I don't mind.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Good afternoon, all. I believe that you've had my written statement, so I'll just sort of, in view of keep saving time, I won't go through it in full detail.
Yes, I think from all members of the public and those who are presenting, rather than read through your statements, it'd be far better if you just brought out the salient points of each of the statements that you have.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, the officer, you've just heard the office report, and they've highlighted a large number of potential impacts and raised a number of questions. As stated, I represent a house builder in Wales, and will sort of concentrate on some of the issues around particularly the housing. I think firstly, HBF were supportive of the strategy. I mean, in the past, HBF have often been critical of LDP strategies, and often looked for higher numbers within plans. But in this case, we were supportive of the numbers. And we're also, I mean, I've been doing the job for eight years, and I've spoken to colleagues who've been doing it a lot longer, and this is the first time that we've heard of this happening in Wales. And I guess it's driven by the fact that we now have a national plan. It's the first time that we've had a national plan in Wales. And interestingly, it was brought in in a slightly different way to other plans in Wales, where it didn't have the same independent scrutiny that the LDPs have to go through. But it is now adopted, and obviously we have to work with it. The plan-led system is critical in Wales, and you know, the days of being able to put planning applications in on, as Welsh Government described it, random bits of land, and sort of talk about lack of housing supply, they're long gone. You know, we need a plan-led system, and therefore we are keen that whatever decision you make does try and keep the plan moving forward. In terms of housing, one of the biggest side impacts, I guess, of housing is the Section 106 agreements. The legal agreements are often attached to new housing development. And obviously, these help deliver affordable homes, but also they result in wider community benefits, highway improvements, and an ever-growing list of improvements that are delivered as a result of new housing. And obviously, as this has been demonstrated, if we don't have the housing that was proposed, then we will have less of that investment. Probably key to Welsh Government as well as members is the delivery of affordable housing. I mean, what I, you'll see, I've done a very quick calculation, and you know, it shows that the loss of the, the reduction in the number of houses Welsh Government's suggesting on its own could reduce the delivery of affordable by around 1,000 units, which is certainly a significant number of units. And finally, you know, as touched on in the presentation, what was interesting with the timing of this letter, what was that, the letter came to Mammoth one week, and literally the following week, you know, the Economy Minister of Welsh Government made a big statement about how they wanted to keep a younger population in Wales, and get more people living and working, being educated, and staying in Wales. And to our mind, the strategy that's proposed currently clearly meets that aspiration, whereas what the Welsh Government's suggesting you should do would hinder that. I think that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that presentation, Mark. The next presenter will be Helen Runcetti. She's from, rather, the Secretary of the Raglan Village Action Group. So Helen, over to you.
Hi there. Yeah, I did email Hazel to alert her to the fact that I didn't really want to speak directly to the committee, just to urge the committee members to consider our points made in our representation.
Okay, that's fine. We certainly will. I'm sure we've all read the representation in any event. But thanks very much. So if you don't want to say anything further, I'll ask John Keegan from Mammothshire Housing Association to come in and make his presentation. Thanks. Over to you, John.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, so, I mean, you've had a lot of technical information up until now, I think I need to deal with the human element of this, which is our business. We've got 3,500 households on our waiting list at the moment, we've got a very low turnover within our own stock, and the other RSLs in Monmouthshire as well, we've had no evictions for over two years, we've had 55 properties held up by phosphate issue, yet amongst this, our ambition is to have 5,000 homes by 2030, because that's the minimum number that will be required for an organisation like us in Monmouthshire to have balanced communities, and to make sure that people from Monmouthshire, remember, the vast majority of people we house are from Monmouthshire, because to get housed in Monmouthshire, you need a local collection, if you're not from here, or haven't worked here, or lived here for a long time, you won't have one. Currently, we just have just under 4,000 houses, and we've got a long way to go, we've got about 1,200 properties we need to build for ourselves, not just in total, just for ourselves between now and 2030. Every single day, our staff are getting inundated by people ringing up begging for accommodation. We don't have it, and it's wearing all day long, everybody has a story, some of the members of this committee have been on our board, they know exactly what I'm talking about. These are human beings from Monmouthshire with no chance and no hope of getting housed where they're from, in the communities they're from, able to work and live back in their communities, and add back to, Monmouthshire's made by the people from Monmouthshire, not the house that are built, but if the people are from Monmouthshire can't stay there, well then the community suffers. Certainly, at the moment, we see private sector landlords, because the tax rules have changed, beginning to sell up, but as they sell up, they don't create a new home, that home is there already, somebody lives in it, the person that's living in it goes on to the waiting list, or presents as homeless, somebody else buys a property, but no new accommodation has been created, the problem is not being solved. So we are, at the moment, currently, we have about maybe 30 to 40 bids at least for every property that we advertise as available for let, but only one person gets it. We see the working age population in Monmouthshire is declining quite rapidly, but Monmouthshire is not an industrialised area, there are very little brownfield land available for redevelopment in Monmouthshire, and anyone who says that that's the solution to this problem, really, that's a distraction tactic, the land doesn't exist, it's not an industrialised area. But who is going to work then in the predominant industries within Monmouthshire, which are service industries, and these are low-paid jobs? Well, they're the people who live in our properties. If people can't live in our properties, then you don't have the people available within the county to work in those industries, so who's going to do it? Well, nobody will do it, because all of the other counties are suffering from the same issue. So population, age and demographics are very, very important, and we will predominantly house younger people, particularly in newer properties, because that's the size of property that they require. There are very few high-paid jobs within the county, and as I said, so they're for our tenants and the employment opportunities that we offer frequently to people in our community. So for example, a lot of the new properties that we can't build at the moment, we build using our own staff, so what are they going to do? Well, we resolve the phosphate issue, which for me seems like will take many years, where are we going to house people, how are we going to keep people economically active in the interim? The demand, yes, is higher in the south than the north, but there is a lot of demand in the north of the county as well, there is no part of Monmouthshire, there is no part of Monmouthshire without a very high demand for housing, and that demand is coming from Monmouthshire people, it's not coming from elsewhere, it's from Monmouthshire people, because if you're not from Monmouthshire, you won't get on the waiting list anyway. We build a really high-quality product, the planning committee have been around to see all of our houses, we work very closely with planning colleagues Mark and Craig, and the guys, and they're fantastic relationship, the only thing that can be built is being built, nothing is in abeyance. If we have any site at all, we're pushing, pushing, pushing forward all the time, which are hard to bring it to fruition, because of the pressure on our own staff here at work, we're a beginning-to-end organisation. You apply for housing through us, you get housing through us, and when you get housing with us, we expect you to stay in it for 60 years, quite frequently, so you won't be moving anywhere else, and why would you? Look at the county that we live and work in, it's fantastic. So we can't build just anywhere, the issues which determine where we can build, phosphate issue at the moment, contamination of land, attenuation, which means the drainage and waste that comes from the properties, access to services, and the cost of the land. So when you take those into account, not only is it difficult to build in Monmouthshire in the first instance, but within the second part, then there are many, many constraints as to where you could build, so the number of areas you can build is very, very limited within Monmouthshire. And ultimately, despite what people think in the county, a very, very, very low percentage of land area of Monmouthshire has housing on it, a very low percentage, there are vast areas of open land, and certainly, we absolutely, on a daily basis, know the problems, we want to resolve the problems, and we think that people have to accept that households or household numbers are growing, even if the population isn't growing greatly, each household requires accommodation, and we're dealing with the outfall from that every single day of the week, and we really, really want your help. We know that you're in this, our priorities are your priorities, that's the symbiotic relationship we have with you guys. So I won't go on anymore, I can just say that that's the only time in my life I've ever spoken for three minutes, and I think it's totally unfair when I could have given you at least two hours of this, but the reality, Chair, is we're under tremendous pressure, and we've got to have you guys to help us.
Thanks, John, thanks very much for your presentation, and if you can switch your camera off now, as much as we like looking at you, thanks. Right, and now can we proceed to our next speaker, who is Gareth Williams of the Litchfield Planning and Development Consultancy. Gareth, over to you. You're muted.
Yep.
You're okay now?
I think we're there. Right, follow that, from Mr Keegan's very, a lot of the issues he talks about there, I'm very familiar with. So yeah, Gareth Williams, I'm a Senior Director of Litchfield's Planning, and have over 30 years' experience advising both private and local authority clients in development plan preparation. Myself and colleagues at Litchfield's have participated in the majority of development plan examinations in South Wales during the past 20 years, so we've got a lot of experience in exactly these issues. I fully endorse the report prepared by the councillors' officers and kind of the presentation that Craig's just run through. I consider that the approach taken by the council in preparing its preferred strategy is well-evidenced, is locally specific, and is compliant with Welsh guidance when read as a whole. By contrast, I consider that the Welsh Government response that you've received, setting out maximum growth figures, is flawed for four main reasons. Firstly, it fails to properly follow its own procedural guidance on preparing an evidenced-based LDP. Secondly, it's selective in the reading of its own policy guidance and the outcomes it's looking to achieve. Thirdly, it fails to properly consider and then weigh up competing policy aspirations and outcomes. Fourthly, it proposes an approach that does not appear to accord with its own tests of soundness. Some areas of Wales require specific policy interventions to deliver more positive economic and social outcomes than have been achieved in the recent past. I support the policy aspirations of the Cardiff Capital Region and future Wales. I do not agree, however, that the council's preferred strategy and these regional policy objectives are mutually exclusive. The approach proposed by Welsh Government would, in my view, undermine Monmouthshire's ability to rebalance its population with major local adverse economic and social consequences. It would limit its ability to retain young families, maintain an adequate workforce, and therefore fund and sustain essential social infrastructure such as affordable housing, talked about by Mr Keegan, and increase local care costs. This would be detrimental to the region's growth prospects rather than enhancing them. It is overly simplistic to assume that growth denied in Monmouthshire will somehow emerge elsewhere in South East Wales. The council's reference and Craig's reference to the UK competitiveness index demonstrates that whilst Monmouthshire performs well economically compared to other local authorities in Wales, not one local authority in Wales lies above that index, the index's benchmark. Wales is not in a strong enough economic position to deliberately restrict development in locations that are competitively advantaged. I agree with the council's concern that the result of the Welsh Government intervention could be to level down rather than to enhance regional growth prospects. Monmouthshire is well-placed to assist in delivering the positive regional economic outcomes sought by Welsh Government, and this should be harnessed. Thank you.
Thanks, Gareth, for that presentation. We can now proceed to David Haswell. David Haswell, if you'd like to come in there, please. David, if you can switch your camera on and your microphone on.
Can you see, have you got me?
We can hear you.
I can see the screen, Chair, I appear to be in view.
I can't see you.
All right, I'll try the other button. Any luck?
I can hear you still, can't see you.
Okay, all right, I'll try once again. Any better?
No.
Okay, Chairman, I'm not much to look at anyway, so I'm not stressed about this.
We may just have to hear you then, David.
Well, I'll do my best on the hearing side. Anyway, thank you for inviting me to speak today. Councillors won't be able to see the tie that I'm wearing, which you presented to me 25 years ago on my retirement. I just felt that, well, like the views of Seoul, it should get a little airing today. Your colleagues will have received and possibly read the written submission, I have no intention to repeat the text, but instead to highlight our main concerns and, and to offer some constructive points for action. So, three minutes on the LDP. First, Chairman, in our view, the planners' report over-concentrates on the issue of housing growth at the expense of moving forward on other issues. The MCC proposal for 8,000 new dwellings remains unchanged, despite the views of stakeholders expressed over the last two years, and indeed, the evidence from Welsh Government. Our worry is that this opportunity for compromise has been lost. In anticipation of a reduced housing target, we would expect to see a significant change in direction, a move away from large greenfield sites, usually on the edge of settlements, to an examination of smaller brownfield sites. Nevertheless, we recognise a mixture of both is the answer. As regards the challenging issue of 50% affordable, this is a tough one, no denying it, and planners make some good points regarding the Welsh Government constraint on delivery. However, given that the Welsh Government requirement of 50% matches that of MCC, we await confirmation that MCC will indeed formally adopt its three requirements. However, importantly, we would expect MCC planners to make a special case in view of the demonstrated inability to meet affordable housing growth targets. Moving on, the Green Belt. The unexplained Welsh Government imposition of a large green belt with no specific boundaries is not helpful to anyone. We believe MCC should seize the initiative without delay, agree the scope and boundaries with Welsh Government and the other local authorities, and make proposals within the rules, within the rules, Chairman, and include them positively in the LDP. The Green Belt should not simply be a constraint. County farms, there's 26 county farms remaining largely in Sevenside, they represent a real opportunity for MCC to offer standalone sites for all kinds of initiatives, self-build, affordable housing, solar farms next to the national grid. Chairman, this is the time to publish the so-called confidential report, show us the map, and get creative. Economic growth, MCC is proposing jobs growth twice the level it offered 12 months ago, yet the calculated land provision to support this is a mere 2% increase. It is unable to provide current jobs evidence for each of our towns. Why? No wonder the leadership announced in 2019 that the strategy wasn't working. Time for a complete rethink. And Seoul says, "Jobs, please, before extra housing." Green wedge review, planners report that only eight sites are proposed as candidate sites for protection, compared with 150 for development. Yet the much-promised green wedge review has not yet begun, and the planners are proposing to undertake the work at the end of the process, as a sort of mobbing-up exercise. This is supposed to be a proudly green county at this moment, to demonstrate that. And Sevenside, I've written to members about the Burns Commission proposing new stations in Sevenside, close to the M4 corridor, and the influx of jobs and demand for housing following the removal of the bridge tolls. It seems inevitable that Sevenside should play a prominent role in the forming the new LDP. Seoul believes it should take a higher proportion of whatever new housing target is proposed, and this should be supported by a new master plan, indeed, Sevenside. We would refer to this as Sevenside Extra. And so, members, in conclusion, there may be some justification in parts of the MCC argument, but planners cannot win when growth plans are so far removed from the Welsh Government policies and predictions. It is time to accept, with some reluctance, the reality, the weakness of the MCC position. This is not the moment to allow Clint Eastwood to ask if we feel lucky. We all remember what happens next. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, David, sorry we couldn't see you or your tie. Finally, we've got David James from the Rural Housing Enabler for Monmouthshire and Powys. David, if you'd like to come in.
Thanks, Chair. I'm no longer the Rural Housing Enabler for Powys, I work exclusively in Monmouthshire. And I didn't make a written submission, but I've just kept to the salient points in what I'm going to say, so I will follow some sort of text, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Yeah. I have worked as Rural Housing Enabler for Monmouthshire since 2008. The local housing market has changed significantly since then, and the outlook for local people wanting to live in the county has never been so bleak. I carry out a series of six monthly interviews with local estate agents and those who operate exclusively online, such as Purple Bricks. Without exception, all of them report that there is a massive under-supply of properties for sale, but especially for first-time buyers, those in the 25 to 35-year-old age group. Market forces in this sector dictate that the average mortgage for first-time buyers is around £180,000, and usually, a buyer has a day or two to decide whether to purchase. The private rental market is unable to help. Estate agents report to me that they only consider tenants who call within the first 24 hours, there's simply too many to choose from. A small two-bedroom property in one of the main Monmouthshire towns attracts a rent of at least £775 a month, and potential tenants are outbidding each other. A direct impact of COVID pandemic is that people have embraced working from home, and it has allowed families to move closer together, this has been one of the key drivers of the housing market over the last 18 months. There are currently 2,169 households on Monmouthshire's housing waiting list, and even if every affordable home in the committed supply was built right now, there would still be a shortfall in excess of 1,200 affordable homes. In every single community, I have helped deliver affordable housing, it has not only made a difference to the new tenants, it has made a big difference to the communities as well. But since I started working as the RHE, the demand for affordable housing has gone up, and we've been unable to satisfy local housing need. I have built up an extensive network of contacts throughout the county, carrying out my work. Many residents still ring me for updates to find out if any new affordable housing is being built, whether it's social rented or low-cost home ownership. For the first time in my 13 years of doing this job, I'm sure they can tell my usual optimism has waned. I know that many of these people are married and still living with their parents, or they're paying extremely high rents in poor conditions, and I feel very sad that I'm unable to help. and I feel very sad that I'm unable to help. If Monmasia County Council does nothing and allows market forces alone to dictate this future, then the crises will only get worse. That is why the preferred strategy of the RLDP should be looked at as an opportunity to address the affordable housing crisis, to tackle a crisis of demographic imbalance, and to face up to the climate emergency crisis. The evidence clearly shows that can only be achieved with the preferred strategy's level of growth and new policies, which they urge the committee to support. Thank you.
Thank you, David. If you can put your camera off now, thanks. Members, we can now proceed with the rest of the agenda. And thank you for the public open forum speakers. Certainly, we will be taking into consideration everything you've presented to us this afternoon. If I can ask the first question, actually, of officers, and that is perhaps directed to Craig or to Mark. Were officers aware of the Welsh Government's objection before the preferred strategy consultation response? The Raglan Village Action Group's written statement refers to comments in a previous council report about economic-led strategies. Does that mean that we had been given previous advice? Mark, could you answer that one?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks for the question. I'll take this one. We'll probably share the questions out. You'll be pleased to know I'm struggling a bit with speaking, so I'll be brief. The short answer to the question, Chair, is no. We weren't aware of those objections in advance, disappointingly. So we consulted the Welsh Government on the first Growth and Spatial Options paper, which was in July 2019, and we did receive an objection to the options at that stage. But that objection was on the basis of our inclusion of the concept of new settlements. And the objection was that the Welsh Government guidance was that those new settlements should come forward via joint LDPs or SDPs. So members probably recall that discussion. There wasn't any comment at that stage on the levels of growth, which were broadly comparable with the preferred strategy now. We consulted them again on the second Growth and Spatial Options paper in January 2021, but we didn't have a reply to that consultation. And that consultation unusually clearly set out our preferred direction of growth in terms of the level of growth and spatial options at that time. We then met Welsh Government officials, including Neil Hemington, Chief Planning Officer, I think it was in April 2021. That was part of a session or a series of sessions that the Welsh Government was offering to each local authority to talk about what Future Wales 2040 means for each area. So they met with us and talked through what Future Wales 2040 means for Monmasia. So that was after our Spatial Options Paper, the Growth and Spatial Options Paper consultation that happened. So the information was out there and just before Preferred Strategy. But we didn't receive any adverse comments at all during that meeting about our growth ambitions. We had a good discussion about how, you know, we as officers thought we were outside of the national growth area, but Policies 4, 5, and 7 of Future Wales 2040 were key to our objectives. In the Raglan Village Action Group's statement, they talk about comments in a previous council report. I think that quote's taken a bit of context in actual fact in the Preferred Strategy from March 2020, the document referred to. That comment was referring to the reasons why we had employed Edge Analytics as our consultants to look at the demographic-led scenario that was the then-Growth Option 5A from that Preferred Strategy. And the reason for doing that was because in a regional meeting, so not a Monmasia-specific meeting, but a regional one, Neil Hemington had made a comment that, as an economist, he was skeptical, he lacked confidence in economic-led projections. And we had a number of different projections in each of our Preferred Strategies, just to look at different options. We looked at housing-led scenarios, population-led scenarios, and economic-led. So we took that advice on board and steered away from economic-led projections. So to clarify for members, just to ensure everyone is clear, our preferred strategy is not an economically-led model. It's a demographic-led model. So that means the strategy is built around the desired population profile in 2023. So looking at the adjustments that are set out in paragraph 3.6 of the report to try and see what outcomes we want to achieve, looking at our demography and affordability. And then when you've set that population level to achieve those objectives, you work out how many homes you need to deliver that and how many jobs you need to serve that population. In terms of the homes, we added in an adjustment. So trying to deliver more homes for people already within our communities in the 19- to 34-age groups that David James was talking about just then, who are living within the county but either in shared accommodation or living with their parents because they can't get on the housing ladder. So looking at an adjustment, so we build more homes without increasing the population to serve them, and then looking at the growth aspirations as well to address the demographic challenges. So hopefully that answers the question, Chair. So we weren't aware of those objections in advance. Members will probably recall the topic of conformity with Future Wales 2040 came up at council when it was reported for the current Preferred Strategy consultation. And we had an appendix of the report setting out how we, as officers, considered we were in conformity with the plan against all of the different objectives. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Michael. A long answer to a short question. Thanks. councillor Giles Howard, you've got your hand up. Perhaps you'd come in?
Good afternoon, Chair, and hello, members and guests. Season's greetings in advance. We've had an absolute mass of information on the presentation and via those who took part. And I think a meeting like this is never going to be able to consider the scope of what we've been presented with. So I have a few points, and apologies to those who've heard elements of this before, but there may be those who are taken part in the meeting who haven't. So I want to raise a few points about the report as it stands. First one of those is paragraph 3.4. And I'm a little bit concerned that there seems to be some, almost some blame apportionment going on, and the suggestion there that Welsh Government's lack of response is almost an automatic agreement with the Preferred Strategy. And I just thought, well, did no one pick up the phone to the Welsh Government and ask why they hadn't submitted a response to the non-statutory consultation? When I had some correspondence with Mark Newey, who I assume is still the head of the Plans Branch in December of last year, and he advised that the Welsh Government wouldn't respond to a non-statutory consultation only when the Preferred Strategy had been agreed out on formal consultation. And then there's the reference to the April 21 meeting. That's a bit unclear. And it states that the officials didn't raise any concerns regarding the preferred level of growth. Was this actually discussed at the meeting? Were the Welsh Government planners asked directly for their views on growth? And are there any notes or minutes from that meeting? So we can see the nature of the discussion, please. I'd like to make a point on paragraph 3.6 then, and just a brief one, that the content there doesn't distinguish between the Welsh Government's population projection of around plus 6,000 to 2033, whereas the Preferred Strategy was around about plus 12,000. So I don't think anybody is recommending or predicting a negative growth for the county. So paragraph 3. So I've got two computers and two mouses, and I keep grabbing the wrong one, so bear with me. So yeah, paragraph 3.13 onwards then, and Future Wales 2040. And for me, that's the fundamental issue, as picked up in Craig's presentation. And just to recap, the population of the South East Wales region is stated as being 1,530,000 with a need of 66,400 homes over a 20-year period. Our population is around about 95,000, which is about 6% of the South East Wales total. And I think what stuck out for me in the beginning was that the Preferred Strategy seeks to deliver in excess of 11% of the required need of the whole South East Wales region, albeit over a shorter 15-year period. And that, to me, doesn't make sense when Monmasia isn't even identified as being part of the national growth area. So I can understand the Welsh Government's position and perhaps considering that the plan is going in a direction of unsoundness. And I see paragraphs 3.53 of the report onwards trying to demonstrate that there's some kind of conformity with Future Wales and the local choice and aspirations. But surely none of those considerations can allow an LDP strategy to go above and beyond the scope of the document itself. Paragraph 3.26, the comment indicates that there's conflict between the advice received from Welsh Government and particularly Julie James' two letters. Bearing in mind that that was an All Wales letter and not specific to Monmasia. So it doesn't suggest that national planning policy should be disregarded. Just skipping on then to job creation. I note, and this point I've raised before, we still haven't been presented with any evidence that from within the current plan period that there's been a direct correlation between the number of new houses and jobs. So I'd still like to see that, and I dare say Welsh Government would too. Further comment then, as a reference to past build rates being atypical, particularly the last few years and the economic slowdowns we've had. But I just point out that when we discussed and debated the current LDP, that no concerns were raised about the atypical high levels of build prior to adopting that. So I'll go on forever. I'm a little bit concerned that a lot of the discussion that we've had so far seems to be about the appropriateness of Future Wales. But to my mind, that's a debate that should have happened well over a year or more ago and to this depth as part of the Welsh Government's consultation for that document. So I'll come to a final question for Craig or Mark. Could you outline to members what the consequences would be of proceeding to deposit stage with a plan based on the current Preferred Strategy? And then what would happen if the plan were found to be unsound on inspection? Thanks very much, Chairman.
Thanks, Giles. Mark, if you'd like to come in with a response?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Loads of points in that, so I've made some notes as we've gotten. In terms of paragraph 3.4 and the lack of response from the Welsh Government, we're certainly not implying that's tantamount to an agreement with where we were going. But I certainly would say it's disappointing in terms of the wellbeing of future generations, you know, ways of working and that level engagement. The meeting in April 2021 was, as I said, about what Future Wales 2040 means for Monmasia. So there was discussion around the national growth area and the extent of it, with even a comment from Welsh Government officer there suggesting that it was up for definition and Monmasia could theoretically argue it was within, which we didn't agree to be the case as Monmasia officers. So our focus was on Policies 4, 5, and 7, which I won't repeat to you because they're quoted in the report that's in front of you. And I would suggest support the argument that we're making. In terms of notes or minutes, I'll check with colleagues, and if we have anything, we'll happily share them with members. But, you know, given that the purpose of that meeting was to talk about the implications of Future Wales 2040 for Monmasia and how it fits with our role, it was a perfect opportunity. If there were comments, I would have expected them to be raised. And the nature of the conversation didn't alert us to any of those concerns, which meant the August letter was something of a surprise. In terms of paragraph 3.13 and the level of growth in the region and councillor Howard's comment that we can't go beyond the scope of Future Wales 2040, I think this is the fundamental point of where we're at disagreement. So from my point of view, my opinion would be the Welsh Government is relying, or the Welsh Government officers are relying on those population need figures, those population projections, which is the baseline need. So by trying to apportion that out for a region, we end up dividing up an artificially small cake and then wondering why each area has an artificially small amount. The Welsh Government's own guidance is clear that isn't the way to approach it. Projections alone should not be relied upon. We should also be looking at local housing market assessments and wellbeing plans and evidence. So I think the fundamental point for me is that is the wrong starting point. In terms of comments being made during the formation of Future Wales 2040, numerous bodies, including ourselves, raised concerns about the lack of aspiration in the growth levels in Future Wales 2040 and said that was a matter of concern. But, you know, clearly, it is published as it is, and that is the statutory plan that we're working to. But the guidance and the policy is clear about population projections and how they fit into proposals. And there's various other bits of text that's in the report, but again, I won't repeat now. In terms of the letters from the minister, from Julie James, yeah, they were letters to all Wales, and then the content's clear. And I'm surprised that, no, we wouldn't be grasping that offer of delivering more affordable housing when it's very clearly an evidence need in the county. And we've heard from a couple of speakers about the impact that's having on people's lives, you know, in a very human sense. The build rates arguments, I think they're covered in the report from an officer point of view, and the quotes are on the guidance. In terms of the consequences, so the consequences of proceeding with a plan that isn't sound is that we get to examination. So if I take a step back and explain the next stages, so we'll be looking to bring a report to council to agree how we proceed on this once we've had time to consider all the issues raised and the different factors, and members have to. The next statutory stage in the plan process is the deposit plan. So that is put out for consultation. But that's what we think the final version of the replacement local development plan should look like. So all of the policies, all of the site allocations, that goes out to consultation. It then gets reported back to council with the consultation responses, and councils ask to agree a final version of the plan for submission to the Welsh Government. And it then goes off for inspection by an independent, oh, sorry, goes off for examination by an independent inspector. So we don't have an opportunity between now and then to, you know, get a quiet conversation with an inspector or an inspector's view. It is at the examination when an inspector is appointed and considers the plan. So it's that inspector's opinion of, based on the evidence, whether or not the plan is sound against the tests of soundness. So if the inspector deems that the plan isn't sound, that stage, if it's that fundamental, happens early doors in the process, within the first couple of days, and potentially the inspector could reject the plan, and we'd need to go back and rework it. So, you know, the implications are a time delay in having an adopted plan, reputational harm, and cost to the authority of getting to that stage. So none of which are desirable. But I think what we need to work through, and this is the council's plan, this isn't our plan as officers, it's not my plan. This is the council's plan, and the members do agree. But when we get to that stage of bringing a plan to you for submission to the Welsh Government, council will have to be satisfied that plan is sound and meets the test of soundness. I would suggest to you that the Welsh Government officers' maximum growth level would result in a plan that's not sound for the reasons that we're setting out or the concerns we're highlighting in the report in terms of it not meeting the other tests of soundness. And I don't think, in my opinion, it is a discussion about MCC's Preferred Strategy versus the national growth area. It is, if you're looking at the wrong starting point. But if you're looking at the bigger picture, I don't see that they're mutually incompatible, mutually exclusive. We're talking about 3,000 homes or 222 per annum, which in a regional context is a small number over a 15-year plan. I don't see why that unhinges the national growth area or the ambition for that area. And in an economic sense, you know, we're one of the strongest areas in Wales, as we heard from Gareth. from Gareth earlier. Um but Wales overall is not strong and not strong enough for one area such as Mammashir to be held back so that other areas um can can grow. So instead, I'd suggest to members, by allowing Mammashir to grow under its own steam and its own ability, that allows the public sector interventions to be placed and focused on the national growth area where it's needed. And then everyone benefits, everyone succeeds. Rather it be in a competition for a a minimal level of of growth. Um so those are the consequences in terms of of taking a plan forward. If it's not sound, then the short answer, it gets rejected at examination. Um so we'll have to work through with members and members will have to conclude um that the plan that is being put forward is sound, whether that follows the Welsh Government's um maximum growth figure, um the current preferred strategy or something else. But hopefully that that answers the question. Um thanks Chair.
Thanks, Mark. Um councillor Jez Becker, come in.
Thank you Chair. I did notice, Mark Giles put another question in the in the chat, so I'll just finish off for him. He wanted to know, uh outside of any site allocations, can we assume that there would still be an exception policy for a hundred percent affordable developments?
Uh thanks councillor Becker. Um yeah, there's there's national policy that allows for one hundred percent affordable homes exceptions. Um in currently in around villages or rural areas. Um we've actually got a site on the edge of Abegavenny for twelve affordable homes, but that's been called in by the Welsh Government and is with them um to consider because it's outside of the scope of the current LDP. Um on the edges of villages, they can happen. Um I think I'm right in saying, under the current LDP, we've probably had um four or five homes delivered via that mechanism, um three in Tinton. And I can only think of a couple of others, certainly less than ten, um from my knowledge, if any of my colleagues wanna chip in if they know the answer. Um but I think it's in the region of of about five um in the uh in the plan period since twenty fourteen when the plan was adopted.
Okay, well, hopefully that's councillor Howard happy. Um yeah, I I've listened to the public speakers and I I sympathize with them uh in different ways. And also, I'd like to express, you know, my sympathy for the officers who have worked to an incredibly tight deadline already. And this is, this sort of really changes things for them. Uh it must be very frustrating. I think for me, uh it feels like it pulls the rug out from our ability to grow a sustainable economy. If we if we follow the the Welsh level of growth, then we simply won't have enough uh way to provide the youth or social services that we already require, let alone that we would require with a a larger population. So I'm gonna keep this quite sort of high level. Um the, it damns us to be an executive dormitory, basically. There's there's no chance of our our young people getting on the property ladder. It would just be the expensive executive housing that we've already got changing hands at that same level. You know, I've just, I've noticed that I've got this next to me. I'm firmly convinced that this Lego house is the only house my children will be able to call their own in Mammashir if we continue down this path. Um he says, just wondering if he's, oh, there you go. I actually wasn't quite on, was I? There you go. I'll show you my kid's house. Yeah. So I would say that it's actually equating the house building to jobs and then assigning employment land as well. That that's counterproductive. I don't think we do have that evidence that, you know, uh creating the employment land without creating the kind of housing that the employed people can afford. Uh that's counterproductive. Um so I I don't think really uh the Welsh levels of growth um work for me in terms in terms of providing us the the sort of sustainable economy that we require. But I again, I also don't think the houses. I do wonder if some ways choking um the Mammashir economy into Seven Side in the in the way that they're implying just gives the Welsh Government an out not to deal with the infrastructure problems um that we face in Chepstow. You know, why build a bypass when we're not going to build any houses there? Is it, is that part of the theory here? Um looking forward, there may be a compromise, um which I understand is difficult to integrate at at this late stage, but if we were to push for lower build numbers, we could fundamentally change the plan to give us the housing types that we need. Uh I've been a big advocate of the Community Land Trust. I know Mark was saying we've only delivered, you know, a few houses in that way, but that's because as a scheme, community land trusts aren't supported by us, really. We we don't provide land for them, we don't provide facility for them. And and they would allow us to define the demographic of who lives there. We we could say local people, first time buyers, younger local employed people. You could essentially create a tiered housing system where our executive houses can continue to be leafy and change hands for exorbitant sums, but we would actually have a housing system fit to provide homes for the people that grow up in the county and work in the county. Um I mean, those council farms that we were mentioned earlier, you know, if we actually facilitated CLTs on those sites as a council, then, you know, rather than just blindly chasing receipts, which is currently, as far as I can tell, what we're going to do. You know, we could actually create a much more sustainable set of house building with lower numbers, but with higher quality of housing and more appropriate um to our local population. So I mean, in summary, I don't think the Welsh Government have got it right with these numbers, but I don't think we've got it right either. And I think that, you know, the fact that they're saying this is you know, is a shot across those bowls. There is an opportunity here to be braver with our LDP. Uh so it benefits all the residents of the county. And, you know, I think that, you know, we should use this as that opportunity to look and and make some of these strong decisions. I mean, we keep mooting the the idea of the council actually um building houses. And, you know, we should. We should do that. We should do partnership building with housing associations. We've had successful phrase with that already. We should do community land trusts. Um we should do it on on land that we can essentially provide for that purpose instead of looking for a a short term cash boost from from our resources. Uh I I don't know why we can't do that. Perhaps, Mark, you can tell me why that's something that we can't do. Is the third option of modifying our LDP actually practicable, given the um time limits? And I suppose that's really all I've got to say about it.
Thanks councillor Becker. Um if I, just before I I answer that question, there's some calculations going on about the um affordable housing um exception sites going on. So I'll report back the answer to that properly in a few minutes. Um once we've confirmed. And in terms of councillor Becker's question about doing things differently in terms of housing delivery, um I think it's fair to say that officers and and the members um that we've been speaking to in in recent months um would absolutely welcome that opportunity. Um there was a cross party agreement in council um back in twenty eighteen, I think, for examination of the prospects of of a development company or the council developing houses in a different way. So that sits beyond my my service area, um but is an exciting opportunity and a different way of doing things um and other options. So in terms of the council's own land portfolio, within the current LDP, sites are being put forwards and different things tried with them, for example, the joint venture with Crick. And there's certainly the ambition um to look to do that further within colleagues in the estates team. And they've put forward sites uh in the proper fashion via the candidate sites process for us to consider, um including some county farmland that that David Haswell mentioned earlier. There's there's definitely opportunities within our strategy to deliver more affordable housing. Um we've talked to you about some numbers and we've talked to you in the preferred strategy about fifty percent affordable housing led sites and about the level of affordable housing um within other elements of the plan. And that's based on um some current policy figures, as the only place we've got to go with at the moment. Uh and I guess, you know, a traditional model of PLC, PLCs build most of the homes uh and we get a proportion of that. But there's different models out there, definitely different things for us to um to us to explore and look at ways of of pushing those percentages up, uh so we can achieve that core objective. However, all of that requires land to be allocated in the plan. Um and under the Welsh Government officers' maximum growth level of four thousand two hundred seventy five homes, um we won't need to allocate any new sites because we have that in the land bank. Um so we know we've got nine hundred and sixty one homes, affordable homes from sites with consent already or from um the the land bank there. Uh the only other bit we've got left to influence really is the five hundred and fifty three or so homes um which are on the uh the windfalls. The the smaller sites tend either to give a commuted sum or or a a very small onsite contribution because of their size. So in order for us to do those different things, we can meet your land trusts. I think there are definitely opportunities, councillor Becker, but that does require um a land site allocation to come forwards and that requires at least some level of growth. Um either via the preferred strategy or something uh around that level. Um but for the reasons I just gave, there wouldn't be any new site allocations via the the Welsh Government officers um level of growth, other than the the potential for a hundred percent housing sites that councillor Giles mentioned, but they are in number.
Thanks, Mark. Um if we can go now to to the Thomas.
Okay, thank you Chair. And and thanks all for the presentations this afternoon. I think it's clarified a lot of things for me. I I've got to be absolutely honest, the the evidence is so much stacked in terms of what has been put forward in in the sort of revised local development plan and particularly crystallized by John Keegan from MHA. I I think people like myself, elected members, and there are people who've got probably more deprived votes than I have. But it is a constant theme of people, and and quite rightly so, that they want to be able to uh rent or buy decent housing. And at the moment, um people are struggling and you've got the figures there, you know, over three, three and a half thousand on on the waiting list. Some, I spoke to housing the other day, eighty three people in bed and breakfast accommodation, uh which is ridiculous for a relatively affluent county uh such as such as MCC. And arguments about sort of brownfield sites, I'm not a planner, uh but I can see this is not Cefili, this is not Newport, we don't have brownfield sites, there will have to be some sites built on on greenfield sites. Uh and the built environment in MCC is something like three percent of the land mass, uh and and that is not not huge. The other thing I would say is, I don't want to get into this argument of sort of north versus south because undoubtedly there is demand for housing in both ends of the country and we are one country. And we have to have a a local development plan that actually fits that. And I I find it depressing uh when a a development plan should be aspirational, it should not be sort of depressing uh and looking for less housing and less uh economic development. Uh I I really feel strongly about that. And some of just two other points, one, I'm chair of children, young people, we've had the housing manager in, Ian Bakewell, in in past meetings. But I can see as somebody who's been in education for forty years, for children to develop, they need to be in decent housing. They need to have a house with a garden so that they can play and and develop. They're not going to go into brownfield sites such as redeveloping shops in the centre of, say, Abegavenny, which won't have a garden, which will be basically a flat above a shop. Uh that is just not successful. And I'm on corporate parenting, care levers, they struggle, they just can't find anything to rent, let alone buy. And I I just feel very, very strongly about that. And I I think looking at the evidence, not going into any of the detail that some people have gone into because they're probably more into planning than I am, but there does seem to be a huge disconnect between the inspector's report from Welsh Government uh and what Julie James says. And I know Julie James is covering the whole of Wales, but there is a disconnect there. She wants affordable housing, which is I, which is what I want. And arguing against a development of communities and place, I think, is a complete nonsense. If if we proceed with a revised LDP with far less housing, I think that will be a retrograde step. And I know David Haswell referred to uh Clint Eastwood, but I I think I'd refer to David Copperfield and Miss Havisham, who was living in uh a decrepit house which was going into the ground and she was getting older and nothing was happening. And that's what's happening in MCC for people who've got houses. And I'm I'm in that position, yeah, I I've got my own house, et cetera. It it isn't a massive personal concern to me, but it is a concern to me for my constituents in Abegavenny. And I I honestly think we need to pursue uh the current local development plan revised, what has been put forward by the officers. And I thank them for for their vision in that. Thanks.
Thanks Tudor for that statement. I didn't actually um see a question there, but if I can go back to Jez Becker, I think he wants to ask a supplementary and I apologize for cutting him off too soon.
That's all right, Chair. It's it's probably disappeared now, but I was essentially going to draw Mark's attention to the fact that he's saying that we don't need to put forward sites because we have them in the LDP. I was asking if we qualitatively changed what's in the LDP to put forward sites that are supported by things like CLTs, is that a possibility, given the time scales? You know, change what it is that we're saying we're going to build rather than um just the amount that we're going to build.
Um I'm just trying to think through your question, councillor Becker. Um I mean, at the moment, we've consulted on a preferred strategy with a level of growth, so the next stage is deciding how we proceed, you know, against the Welsh Government's objection or or this. Um so in terms of, if if we stick with there's, I guess, there's there's two two fairly simple options. If we go with the Welsh Government's um officers' level of growth, then we don't have any new site allocations. So I don't think we can achieve the things that you're talking about. Um the only bits we really have to play with are, you know, a couple of of sites rolling over from the current LDP that are coming forwards anyway. Excuse me. Um if we go for a higher level of growth, including the current preferred strategy, then yes, there is scope to change what's delivered on the sites and the sites included um and different ways of doing things and achieve a higher level of affordable housing to the figures that we've we've referred to. That is within scope. The candidate sites process, excuse me, it's cold rather than emotion. And the candidate sites process um is is closed, so there's not a chance at the moment for different sites to come in. Um but if there was some kind of significant issue with that, um that that could be a further discussion. But certainly what's delivered and by whom is 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 up for discussion, if that makes sense. Chair, if you don't mind.
Essentially, you're saying that the sites that we've got are the sites that we're we're stuck with unless we change something quite radically.
Um the candidate sites process is closed, so we've got, I think, a hundred and fifty candidate sites proposed. Um so we've got loads to choose from, uh loads of options. We don't need anywhere near that many. Um as things stand, there isn't a stance, there isn't a stage for completely new sites to be submitted. Um if if that's what you're asking.
Ish, yeah. Uh it it will do for now. Essentially, it's very difficult for us to pivot that far away from uh one of the two plans.
Um it's difficult, you'd affect it, well. I think we'll take that away and think on that some more, if that's okay councillor, rather than me making it up on the hoof. Um it, yeah, it's not straightforward, but I wouldn't yet say it's it's impossible.
Thank you, Mark.
Chair, while I've got my my camera and mic on, do you mind if I just come back and comment on the one hundred percent affordable homes?
Yeah, please do.
Question earlier from, I think it's from councillor Howard. Um but the that that provision under the current plan, um we think has delivered seven homes, three in Tinton um and four in Flantilio Crossenny. Um there's some others that David James was was raising with me in a in a chat. Um but they all predate the current LDP from from our calculations, so it is a a low number. Um there's the application for twelve on the edge of Abegavenny that I mentioned that's called in by the Welsh Government at the moment.
Right. Thanks, Mark. If I can, if I can just remind members that this afternoon's session is to ask questions uh of officers, um rather than just make statements. So Armand, if you can come in and make your question.
I don't know if that was aimed at me, Paul. Was it? I hope it wasn't aimed at me, because I did have a couple of questions.
It wasn't aimed at you at all. It was a general, it was a general statement.
Okay.
For all members.
Thank you.
Um to ask questions.
I don't normally ramble on.
Okay, thank you. Your question.
My question is, it revolves around really what John, John was saying earlier, he raised some really interesting points which do raise kind of questions about statistical evidence from different parts of the county and how that's been sold to Welsh Government. So for example, we know that house prices are disproportionately higher across the county, but again disproportionately higher in the south because it then competes with this overflow of people coming in from Bristol or cashing in their chips to come and live in Chepstow, Mecca and the et cetera, et cetera, Collygar even. So I think the price to earnings ratio, I don't know if that's been articulated, but I said in previous meetings that I think Chelsea and Kensington had a price to earnings ratio of something like thirteen, fourteen, possibly fifteen times earnings. So salary to the So salary to the value of property. Bristol was up around about nine, I think the Welsh average was six, well, I think we're probably close to nine as well. So, you know, there's some statistical evidence of the requirement to build affordable housing. And the other point is, is that have we explained to them that really the only gross sector, and it's not a surprise really, in Monmouthshire happens to be in the care sector. The care sector pay minimum wage, we pay slightly over that minimum wage, but it's still, you know, it's a low wage economy, effectively that's what we're looking at, unless we can change that. So I guess those are my overall concerns. And also in 2018, and I think I was seconded Dimitri's motion to build a, or effectively start a community interest company up to build affordable houses, use it as a vehicle like they did in Bristol. That never really came to anything, and it's from my understanding of it is that Julie James didn't know we even tried to attempt it to do that, or had some legislative provision in place then to do it. Surely that would help the authority to make a case to Julie James that we are mindful of building affordable homes, albeit that it's, you know, council housing, and I use the word council housing because that's what's required in a traditional kind of sense. We may have an argument about the aesthetics of it, or, you know, concerns that it doesn't end up looking like something from the Soviet Union or whatever, but using a vehicle to build a swathe of kind of housing that will meet the needs which John talked about, local houses for kind of local people, those people who've invested, you know, three generations of their family in the county that want to stay close to their family. And that also supplies a benefit then going forward, because they can, they provide that security network of, or blanket for for their family going to school, looking after older people, that kind of thing. That makes all the kind of sense in the world to me. Sorry if I haven't really tabled that question in a planning sense, more of a kind of socially interested kind of sense, but have we made, have we made those points when we're in discussion with Julie James? Do they understand where we're coming from? Because I find it odd that I can be in a meeting with Bob Greenland and John Keegan actually, and being agreeing on just about every single point of the requirement to then build, you know, a form of, you know, we can argue about the semantics of what council housing is, or what, you know, you can call it whatever you want, but then articulate or put it in a vehicle where you can then build effectively council housing. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Armand. I think it may be beneficial if we take a few questions first and then Mark responds, because it may be a number of questions that are going to be fairly similar. I trust you haven't got a problem? No. Roger, Roger Harris, come in please.
Thank you Chair. I'm sure we don't necessarily have to be asking questions Chair, we ought to be letting the officers know what we actually feel about the submission from the Welsh Chief Planner to our LD, our LDP. And to my mind, this, I keep talking about the Welsh Government. This is not, to my mind, this refutation is not a Welsh Government refutation, it's a refutation by a Welsh Government officer. And that's not the same thing as the Welsh Government telling us it's a load of old rubbish. And the bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, is we should get round to sending off our LDP as it is at the moment, with all that we've heard from people like John Keegan and our rural housing enabler, to actually think that this county should actually stop dead on building houses of any description is an absolute nonsense, absolute crazy. And how any person could put their name to a document like that and and say that's the will of the Welsh Government, which is the inference, is totally mad as far as I'm concerned. And the people that we've had on speaking against it are, who have we got? We've got David Haswell on Soul Save, our unique landscape. And there was a written document from Abergaveni Civic Society. Now, it should be questioned down the line, should it be necessary, of how close both those organisations are to the person writing this document. It may not come to that, but maybe it will do if necessary. I'm sorry to be well, political maybe not the right word of saying it, but to my mind, we produced a perfectly reasonable document. And to have it destroyed, if you like, by a planning officer as opposed to supposedly the Welsh Government is a travesty. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Roger.
Sorry, there wasn't a question there.
Oh, sorry, go on. Sorry. Roger, Roger, come back. I didn't hear that.
No, I said, sorry, there wasn't a question there.
Well, that's okay. Richard, if you're coming, thanks.
Yes, thank you Chair. We're clearly in difficult times. To me, the future ILDP decision is difficult to determine, but I would appreciate answers to two questions. The first is, what is the balance of probability that independent planning inspector will view our current plan favourably? And secondly, if there's not a high chance of gaining a successful outcome with our current plan, what are your thoughts on how we set out to reach a favourable compromise? Thank you Chair.
Mark, if you can come back in and answer those last three questions and statements.
Chair, you happy if we share the love and Craig answers these?
Yeah, fine.
Thank you Chair, and thank you councillor Roden for the questions. Yeah, the balance of probability with regards to success, if we were to progress, and this picks up on councillor Howard's comments earlier about if we were to progress with the existing preferred strategy and the risk associated with that. I think given Welsh Government's letter, there's risks associated with every direction, and whether the members decide to move forward with their plan and how you decide to move forward with your replacement local development plan, there are going to be risks associated. If we do continue with the level of the preferred strategy and the level of growth this outlines to address those local issues, I can give you an honest answer in terms of the probability of success at examination. You've obviously seen the test of soundness which are outlined within the development manuals. You looked at the future Wales and how it conforms and officers' view in terms of general conformity of meeting those policies four, five and seven, and addressing those local issues. It would be down for an independent inspector to make that judgment, to look at all of the evidence and make that call as to whether they do feel that the preferred strategy is addressing all of those issues, is in general conformity with future Wales, and is addressing the local issues and objectives that are outlined within the visions and objectives paper that the council have agreed, so it is a risk. And the balance probability is, is that you get to that stage, it would be down for the independent inspector to make the call as to the conformity with future Wales and whether it addresses those issues. And so I don't think as officers we can give you that clarity or certainty or balance of probability, it would be down for that inspector to call it. In terms of gaining compromise, I think that's what part of this discussion is is with members now, is to have those conversations, we need to have further conversations with Welsh Government. Councillor Watts also picked up on how we speak to the minister about how we can generate the narrative around how we're going to deliver these houses and how they are going to be delivering for the people who are on that housing list. And we already know that the housing list is significant. Maybe we do need to do a lot of work with Welsh Government to find a compromise, to find a place which addresses the key issues which the minister wants to address. You know, it's a key issue to address for the housing in Wales, and we do also have that issue in Monmouthshire. So I think there is a lot of work to be done there in terms of trying to find that compromise and trying to find that level of growth which is appropriate for all, which meets Welsh Government's officers' view in terms of future Wales, and also addressing the local issues and the affordable housing crisis which the minister wants to address. So I think there's some work to be done there in terms of trying to find that compromise and to have those ongoing conversations.
Chair, could I add a point please?
Yeah, far away.
Craig, is there any external expertise that you can call on that may give you guidance in this, or are you already doing that? Thanks.
In terms of guidance for the examination, yeah, we will be seeking advice and seeking to see what our level appropriateness is in terms of the regulations and in terms of the guidance of developing the development plan as to whether external parties also feel it is acceptable or not. And obviously that will be presented back to members then to make that ultimate call. I mean, one of the calls for members to make is, is does the level of growth the Welsh Government seeks to, the level of growth that Welsh Government prescribes to Monmouthshire, does that meet the objectives that you wanted to achieve for citizens in Monmouthshire in 2033? Does it build sustainable, resilient communities? And I think that's the question that members need to ask themselves as we move forward with the development of this plan.
Okay, many thanks.
Thanks Trey.
Do apologize. I mean, I don't want to labour my point, but it was specifically around what happened in 2018 about the I'm not sure, I can't really remember what it was called, but effectively, it was to remember and reflect on, or sorry, it was to reflect or replicate effectively what Bristol City Council had done, which was to set up a community interest kind of type of company, a shell company to develop. Is that, and my specific question was not just a nuanced argument about that kind of thing. It was, are we going to be talking to Julie James about that, about our future development? And that's really important in this debate. It's been touched on by every speaker so far about delivery in affordable housing, and I, you know, I try to kind of allow people to be creative about how they want to kind of represent the word council housing, but that's not been addressed in any of the answers I've got.
Yeah, I think so far as that question is concerned, that's probably best directed to Bob Greenland, the appropriate cabinet member, because he had some involvement in that. And if Bob's on the meeting later, I'll ask him to come in. Okay, Armand? Right, if we can proceed, then Joanne Watkins, councillor Joanne Watkins.
Thank you very much Chair. First of all, thank you to the officers for their presentations, and in particular, thank you to Craig for some of the things that you just said in answer to those previous questions. I found it very reassuring to hear that you are trying to find ways to look more laterally maybe about how we might be able to deal with our affordable housing situation. I also want to thank councillor Giles Howard for making a number of the points I was going to make about the population of Monmouthshire and our ambitions about growth. And I'm not actually sure if his question about employment was actually answered by the officers, and that is still one that I have concerns about. We make these aspirational statements that we wish to grow employment, and yet I don't see any evidence so far that we're managing to do that at the moment. So how do we honestly think we're going to grow 7,000 new jobs in the future? So that's my first question. My second point is we have to accept that we are part of Bristol's housing market, and that is now defining our house prices. The new houses that are going up in my ward at the moment, which are off LDP development, are going for £440,000. That's in Caldicott, meant to be one of the slightly cheaper places to live in Monmouthshire. So there's no way we can actually say that people are going to be able to, ordinary people in their twenties and thirties are going to be able to afford to buy these houses. These are going to be going to executives, they're going to be going to people who commute to Bristol, to Cardiff for their executive jobs. These are not affordable in any sense, trying to buy them as a regular, ordinary person. I couldn't afford to buy one of those homes myself. We have two big issues. One is our LDP has been set up with the high growth rate, too high, as I've stated, I thought it in the past, with the idea that this is going to be for market housing and therefore we have to have a smaller amount of to have to have the market housing in order to get a smaller amount of affordable housing to be through housing associations. It's not going to work. The Welsh Government doesn't like it at all, and I don't think we should be putting forward to repeat the same plan all over again. But we do need to have more affordable housing, and so we need to have different ways of delivering a higher level of affordable housing. So my second question specifically is, when we were talking about sites which were 100% affordable, and that's only kind of a very small number, less than ten have come up in the last LDP plan, is there actually a reason, is there a low limit that is set on these sites? Or is it just because we're not actually trying to seek out 100% affordable sites in order to do those allocations? Is there no reason why we can't have 25 houses built in an area or 30 houses built in an area? Is the reason why these are in ones, twos and threes, and maybe there's 12 in Abergaveni? So those are my two points really, the two questions. But really and truly, I don't think that we should be continuing to pursue such a high level of growth when we've had such a strong rebuttal from the Welsh Government, and we do need to find some form of compromise. Thank you Chair.
Thanks for that. Mark, do you want to take that, or shall we get Louise to ask her question first?
Do you mind if we come back there? There's quite a few points in councillor Watkins' questions, if that's okay?
Yeah, fine. Louise, if you'd like to come in.
Yes, thank you Chair. I think obviously I do have to say a little bit about, you know, what I feel about the LDP. I do think it's been set at a too high level of growth, and basically the Welsh Government response is based on build rate. In the last LDP, there was four and a half thousand houses, of which we managed to build 3,000 houses. If you look at the build rates going forward, there are obviously a number of barriers to that as well because of the fact of the issue of phosphates, the issue of the green belt and so forth. So I think that we have to set a realistic figure. And although I appreciate that the problem has been put forward that effectively we are, you know, we won't be allocating other sites, but there will still be windfall sites and there will be basically the smaller sites as well in which we could ask for a level of housing. We need to be able to think out of the box because we're relying on the old model of basically building a lot of market housing and then expecting a small percentage of affordable housing within that. And the best you can get is 35% affordable, for example, from the Coldicott House, because developers argue about viability and so forth. So the model that we've got, even if we went forward for the high growth option, I do not personally believe would actually result in the level of affordable housing that we're actually arguing for, which is another 1,400. But if you actually take the windfall sites and the other ones, then you get near to the 1,500 side as well. I think what we should be arguing for is basically a compromise so that brownfield sites can actually be used for affordable housing. And our biggest need is one-bedroomed rented accommodation, which does lend itself to using existing properties to do so, and also using brownfield sites. And I think that will be a way forward. And we've also heard from councillor Giles Howard that there is this 100% affordable housing exception. With regard to the comment about county farms, a lot of the county farms are in my area, and quite frankly, the infrastructure won't stand it because we've got traffic congestion problems, and we need a bypass with the existing population. The points that were made by the, the question is, is has also the the council in this report have produced what the problems are, but they haven't actually considered what Welsh Government's response was because, for example, on economic growth, it was stated that the expectation is, is that it'll be the economic growth from two studies they got were based on the fact that they didn't really expect economic growth, and our population isn't going to grow that much. So we've already got that much. So we've already got houses that are being built within the local plan that were based on the idea we needed more houses for young people, and it didn't work. We've got to look at solutions, for example, like there's a housing association in the north of Wales, near Conway, who basically have got loans from, I think, Lloyd's Bank of about 39 million. And with the grants from Welsh Government, it's given them 100 million to actually build 1,000 new affordable homes. So I think we've got to look at a compromise, because I think the likelihood is if we carry on with this plan, A, we won't meet the affordable housing because of the fact that developers will argue viability issues, and B, we've got to think out of the box in terms of how to get affordable housing and to have, say, an exception of, say, 500 extra on brownfield sites to assist in the process. So I don't think, and then look at the planning permissions that we've already given to make sure they're not being land banked. In other words, they have a five-year permission, and then they come back again for it to be renewed. So I don't think, I think the other point is, is that if we ignore the national framework, which basically policy one of the national growth areas, say that there are overarching policies, they're not, oh, let's go for policy four, five and seven. They are overarching in terms of the national growth. So I think we've got to look at compromises, and I fully support the comments that councillor Watkins has made, because basically we are just going to be building market houses largely for people coming from Bristol who want to commute out, which won't solve our problems. So we've got to be much more targeted in terms of how we develop affordable housing and where we develop it, and look outside the box in order to be able to do this. And I don't think continuing in the same way will necessarily assist in even reaching the level of affordable housing that we actually want. There are also, if you look at, there are also the, basically the movement towards zero carbon houses and effectively modular houses and so forth. And there are, you know, different schemes looking at this. And I think we've got to involve ourselves much more with housing associations who perhaps want to make a more innovative approach. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, councillor Brown. Councillor Frances Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, slight lag here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Thank you. There's an awful lot being discussed. But I do want to focus on this issue of, well, there's been an awful lot of talk about the growth strategy, but to be quite blunt, I'd also very much like us to focus, and I'd like to, some responses, on the letter where we talk, where it quite clearly says that the level of growth proposed has the potential to negatively impact on the environmental assets and therefore have adverse consequences for climate and nature emergencies. Now, this council obviously declared a climate emergency in 2019, and one appreciates that the, you know, the plan has been revised in its wake. However, in terms of the letter from Welsh Government, that's clearly outlined, and that also is a concern of mine. And I am absolutely with some of my colleagues that have already spoken that, you know, the level of growth is potentially too high. And whilst there must be some growth, to focus on market housing in the way that we have done previously seems not to solve our problems. So I would like to see us end this meeting, Chair, with some clear proposals about, for example, writing to the cabinet member to propose that we revisit some of those innovative land uses, that we revisit the agreement we reached in 2018, where the council agreed, as councillor Watts and others have mentioned, that it would consider alternative ways of meeting its affordable housing commitments, and that we actually formally write as a select committee to the cabinet member and seek a response, which will then perhaps inform how we go forward and enter into that negotiation, which, you know, there are two points here. I mean, I was quite surprised to read John Keegan's comments, I think in his submission. He says, "To be blunt, what is the priority, people or animals?" I mean, I don't understand what he means by that, and I'm not seeking a response, Chair, but, you know, surely our priority is that with climate change, everything and everyone is at risk. I, you know, speak to you here from the levels, you know, you know that the flood risk maps have changed quite significantly. And, for example, there are sites, you know, in the LDP, in the ILDP, which have been formally, which sit on the levels, where no account has been taken of the protected status of the levels previously. And I think we have to change our approach to that. So my question is, how and what are we going to do to address that point made in the Welsh Government letter? Because we've talked a lot about growth, but not about the climate change element. So that's my question there. And my proposal to consider towards the end, when we come to round up, when all members have spoken, is that we do formally write to the cabinet member, asking that formal consideration and progress is made on the agreement made in 2018 around how we can innovatively use council-owned land and assets to progress our affordable housing needs, and that we don't simply go down the route of creating opportunities for house builders with market housing, which I don't think on its own is going to solve the problem. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Frances. Alan Davis, would you like to come in?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have to say, I don't agree with, some of the comments have been made about growth, because in my opinion, we all seem to think that Monmouthshire is, you know, everything is fantastic in Monmouthshire, and we haven't got any issues. But we've got lots of issues in Monmouthshire, haven't we? We've got, you know, we've got, for example, many children living in poverty, and we have lots of our residents who are desperate for accommodation and can't get that accommodation because there's nothing available for them. And I'd be very surprised, if I'm the only councillor, that they've had representations from residents desperate to get accommodation because they're living with parents, they've got young children, that there's no prospects of them getting anywhere to live. And I, you know, I'm an advocate of an ambitious growth programme rather than not having an ambitious growth programme, because even though in Monmouthshire, comparison with the rest of Wales, we're doing quite well. If you compare our performance with other regions of the UK, we're not doing that well, are we? So, you know, I really don't understand this reticent view about, you know, we'll end up with Monmouthshire a sleepy hollow where we've got, we've got, depending what you read, we've got between 40 and 54% of our economically active residents commuting out of Monmouthshire, out of the county to get work. So, you know, there's a significant environmental impact there, isn't there? And that's why we need to create more work and more jobs within our area. But I think John Keegan hit the nail on the head as far as, you know, the human impact of not having sufficient housing for people to live in. And I would say when we talk about sustainable communities, we also need to think about other things like employment and the way houses are built. And I've got no objection to us being flexible in our approach to building affordable housing, but we need affordable housing. There is no doubt about that. So, you know, I'm quite astounded by what's happened in terms of, you know, I congratulate the authority and the planners on this plan. I think if it had been me, it would have been more ambitious, not less, but because really, you know, we are not doing enough to produce sustainable communities, in my opinion. So I have got a question for the planners, and one question is, is there any other LDP in Wales that allocates no housing sites whatsoever?
Thanks, Alan. Perhaps Mark, if you'd like to come back in now?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Excuse me. Thanks, councillor Watkins, Taylor Brown and Davis for your questions. There's loads there, so Craig and I are gonna share them out a little bit. If I, I'll selfishly take the easy one first, which was the last question from councillor Davis, because it does relate to various other points made. No, to our knowledge, there's no other LDP in Wales with no new housing allocations. It does feel pretty unprecedented and quite an odd way to plan for the future. The reason I take that point first is it's really important to come back to that implication of no new allocations, because it relates back to the other conversation. So, you know, as things stand, if Monmouthshire were to set up its own development company or do something different in terms of delivering affordable housing, if we gifted all of the land that we have for free, the Welsh Government, current position from officers, would deny us the ability to build a single house in our new LDP on a new site allocation. So it's really important that we keep in context that point, that we would have no new site allocations within which to do any of these things. Councillor Brown did refer to the windfall sites and the small sites that come forward, but they're a very small proportion of schemes, and don't give us that flexibility or that opportunity in terms of different mechanisms. You know, this is where we're talking about one or two homes in people's gardens and small windfall sites based on past trends. Just to cover off the remainder of that point around sort of the balance of housing, the Minister's letter from November 2021, which is in the appendices, I think it's appendix two, you know, reflects her position that the level of market housing being delivered in Wales is about right, but the level of affordable housing is, I was going to say woefully inadequate, that's not her words, but I doubt whether she'd disagree with me in that phrase. So switching off market house building isn't the solution. The solution is developing more affordable housing alongside a comparable level of market housing to the past. Some of the evidence is showing us, and comments have been made in this meeting about sort of large executive detached homes, and one of the opportunities we'd have in the new plan is a housing mixed policy, which is secure more smaller but market homes for people who can get on the market if the right kind of property is built, and it's not all three and four bed detached. So that is certainly a mechanism that's before us, and something that I've seen raised in one of the written representations. In terms of other mechanisms of housing delivery, councillor Watkins and councillor Brown were referring to 100% affordable housing sites. They are exception sites, so they're things that can happen outside of the LDP. So it's not a way of planning for growth in the county. It's something that can happen in addition to what's in an LDP. The reason that they are currently very small sites in rural areas is the policy wording, is that they are exception sites in rural areas. There would be scope, in my opinion, to allow for them to be exception sites on the edges of our main towns as well, which would increase that flow in theory. But I think it's almost a shame we can't bring speakers back in, but I'm sure John Keegan and David James would be able to clarify why they so rarely happen. And I expect it's largely because the land isn't there, the grant funding and the finances to make those schemes work and be viable. It's a pretty exceptional circumstance that means that can happen with the infrastructure and 100% affordable housing. It's not costs that are fully covered at the moment by public sector funding, and that's something that we'll need to change as well. In terms of the housing growth, I forget who was making the point about the level of growth, well, I think probably all of the speakers we're just covering the questions from. But, you know, we need that in-migration to grow our economically active population, and this comes back to the point about jobs as well. Our population growth is naturally negative. We have more deaths than births. So without in-migration, the county will be shrinking. That in-migration from the southwest of England is something that I think we should be embracing rather than fearing. And that does give us an opportunity to adjust our demographic, not at the expense of our existing population, but in complement to that. If we have a scenario with very low growth or no growth in the LDP, that in-migration will still happen. Those people who can afford a four-bed executive home in Monmouthshire will still come. What would happen, in my opinion, is that more and more people from our communities who currently live here in the younger generations will continue to be priced out. So we won't be turning off the tap of that inward migration. And that's something that relying on past build rates effectively seeks to artificially do. One of the graphs in the in the report that I think councillor Brown was referring to shows the growth level in the first three years of the new plan, which starts in 2018, and the projected growth from sites that already have planning permission and are realistically expected to come forwards. That shows that with a 4,275 homes cap on growth in the last seven years of the plan, even with just a past trend-based level of windfall sites and small sites coming forward, the plan would over-deliver by 433 homes. So where that graph goes up and then drastically drops down to an incredibly low rate of about 1,400 homes in total over those, sorry, not 1,400 homes, it's the annual requirement from those two elements over that seven-year period at the end of the plan, that would still over-deliver. That's how, if you don't mind me saying, how ridiculous that past-built scenario would be in terms of reality and planning for the future and what we need. Probably the main point that councillor Watkins was raising was around the economic growth and the jobs growth, and that's a point that councillor Howard did raise earlier. I apologize for not covering that. I think there's different elements to the answer in that respect. So the RLDP is one tool in the toolkit for delivering on the economic aspirations the council has, and not the only thing. It's largely an enabling tool and a functioning tool to let that happen. So one of the elements of that is around allocating land. And there's reference in one of the written reps to only being two hectares of additional land for employment uses compared to the current situation. But that's because the land that you allocate in the plan is for what we call B-use classes for employment uses. So that's offices, warehouses, factories, those kind of traditional things that actually have a land requirement. So there's an evidence base behind that land requirement. But we're also aware from data from Cath Fallon's team, from James Woodcock, where we have inquiries from people looking to develop in the county, and we don't have land in the right places. So in Abigavenny, Monmouth in particular, we don't have that mix of land uses that's available. So that is something that the new LDP can address by having land in the right places. Other elements will be via supportive policies. So councillor Watts referred to carers. There'll be all kinds of other sectors, you know, agriculture, carers, the service economy, tourism, where there isn't so much a land take for the employment figures. They're dotted around in small pockets, or, you know, in the case of carers, and would be serving the people of the communities in Monmouthshire, rather than having a very specific fixed base. The answer to that dilemma is having that economically active workforce, and that's where the demographic balance comes in, into play and is important. The other factors in there are around, you know, the Welsh Government aspiration for more people to be working from home and fewer people commuting, and also for us to reduce out commuting levels from the county by having more jobs within. So all of those aspirations together align. But in terms of delivering the jobs, an LDP doesn't deliver jobs any more than it delivers houses. But the way the housing market works is quite different, and those sites come forward in a different way. So it's different tools and different interventions that the council will need to use to encourage that employment. The converse, though, is if we have a shrinking economically active population and a plan that's essentially closed a business, we can pretty much guarantee those jobs won't be coming to the county, because why would you? And arguably, why would we want them to come to the county? And arguably, why would we want them to come to the county if we'd need younger working age people to commute in from outside? That wouldn't be addressing a climate emergency either. So I'll pass over to Craig. He's going to cover councillor Brown's questions and then I'll come back. And councillor Taylors. Thanks, Craig.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, councillor Brown for the questions. There's quite a lot of stuff in there to consider. I think one of the first things you were discussing was around phosphates and the green belts and the inability to deliver the level of growth given those constraints. Now, those are constraints that we certainly need to work within in the planning balance. And they're something that we will be working within up into the deposit plan when we identify which sites the council do want to proceed with. Green belt, in terms of any allocations within that green belt area, that would be significantly unlikely given what is outlined in Policy 34 within Future Wales. And we wouldn't be seeking to support any development within those areas. And phosphate is an environmental constraint that we do need to work within and find solutions for. It is worth noting that the environmental constraint around phosphate and the delivery of development is an existing situation to support existing communities at the moment with existing development proposals. So it's not directly aligned to growth. It's something that we need to address as part of the LDP process. But it is something that we do need to address now and working with other agencies such as Natural Resources Wales, Welsh Water, to build natural nutrient management boards to address the issue head on. But it is a further constraint that we need to consider as part of the development process. The same way that we consider flooding, highway considerations and other environmental factors. So development proposals will be in line with those constraints, is what I'm saying, such as green belt and phosphates. In terms of the level of growth that's been outlined, yes, if we did continue with Welsh Government's 4275, we would be relying on the windfall sites to come forward. And ironically, unplanned developments or development that we as a council haven't allocated. So we'd be looking for small infall sites, small windfalls, those small sites which we have got no control over the delivery mechanism for them over. So that is quite interesting, really, in terms of us being a plan led development process in Wales. Ironically, given our 4708 level of land bank dwellings in the system already, we'd be looking at unplanned developments and windfall developments. And that's because six of our seven strategic sites in the existing LDP have got planning consent and are coming forward. There is that trajectory. There is that those dwellings are coming forward and being delivered. I mean, the second part of the query was around viability. And how do we ensure that the affordable housing that's outlined within the strategy is delivered on the ground? I think it's worth noting that as part of this LDP process, viability is going to be a key consideration when we allocate the sites and when we develop the deposit plan. So there is detailed viability assessments being drawn up now. And we're looking to go into a legal agreement with developers to say they are going to deliver that level of affordable housing whilst we develop the LDP. And that is different from the previous LDP. So we are really, really keen that it's going to be a key measure. Viability and delivery of affordable housing is going to be a key measure. But I think what is a question to pose to members is that if we don't allocate the land for development and if we don't bring that forward, I think that then there is a real challenge of not delivering that affordable housing. Because how does it come forward if we don't allocate the land for development in the first place? There was a good question about 100% exception sites. I think Mark's covered that. But in terms of us supporting them, yes, if they come forward and they are in sustainable locations as a planning officer, myself and the team really want to get behind them. But there are challenges with regards to viability, the scale of them and whether they can come forward in terms of grant funding. And brownfield sites was also mentioned. Again, as a planning officer, we want to support sustainable development. When we're going through the candidate sites and looking at which sites do come forward, brownfield is going to be a key factor in that and we should be supporting those sites and bringing them forward. So as a consequential test, we'll be looking to bring them forward over greenfield sites. And in terms of the existing LDP, it's worth noting the existing LDP tag is 450 dwellings per annum. The preferred strategy is only slightly above that, 507 dwellings per annum. So in terms of a comparison with what we're delivering now on the ground and what we're going to potentially be delivering through the preferred strategy, it's not that significantly different. I think members need to ask themselves whether you feel that those local issues are being addressed adequately in the existing LDP and then also going forward with a preferred strategy. So hopefully that's answered those questions for councillor Brown. The other question was around zero homes and being more innovative with housing associations. Again, we did outline in a climate change note for candidate sites to address delivering low carbon homes as part of their proposals. And in Monmouthshire, we are seeking to really set the bar quite high in terms of energy efficiency and in bringing in mitigation and adaptation to buildings to make them the most efficient homes that we can build, most sustainable homes. So looking to go above and beyond Part L, which comes in in 2025. So that is certainly something that we're seeking to deliver in Monmouthshire. But obviously, we need to have that level of growth to deliver those sustainable homes.
Thanks, Craig.
Sorry, Chair.
Is that for clarification?
Yeah, just come back. I mean, obviously, it was 450 per annum in the last plan. But actually, on average, it was 300 houses that were built. And the growth option that we're, per annum, the growth option that we're talking about is 507 to 557 houses per annum, which is almost twice as much. Thank you. Could I respond to my question about the Welsh Government note in the letter?
Is this a question for clarification?
No, it's an actual question about, so, you know, are we going to respond to the Welsh Government question to us about climate change?
Yeah, Chair, we hadn't got to councillor Taylor's questions before.
I do apologize, Mark. I thought you finished.
Sorry, Chair. You happy if we carry on? Yeah?
Yeah, carry on.
So in terms of, I guess, just briefly in terms of councillor Brown's point about build rates, again, just come back to the point that for somewhere like Monmouthshire, the past build rates are really reflecting what a development plan is allowed to happen within the context of economic circumstances. But the graph I mentioned earlier clearly shows what can be achieved as sites come forwards. We don't have an issue with sites stalled in particularly. You can see from our annual monitoring reports that the sites in the plan have come forward. There's small exceptions around the, some of the 6040 sites, the 60% affordable housing sites around villages, where some of those haven't happened yet and some of them are unlikely to. But in the main, the sites have come forward and that's all carefully documented. I think councillor Brown also made a comment about, you know, sites that stalled and just end up in a land bank and get renewed. I can't actually remember when we last had a significant site with an application just to renew the consent to extend it. It's something that we dealt with all the time when I was working in a previous authority. It's very unusual in Monmouthshire for sites to just be dragged out and have consents extended to come forward at some future date. Typically, once they've got consent, they get built and the developments really do take place here. But sorry, councillor Taylor, I asked your questions around the climate emergency. We're really conscious, it was quite light on that topic, well, very light on that topic in the report. But that's more because we were focusing on the implications of a low growth level for the affordable housing and demographic change aspects. But the climate emergency is front and centre of our thinking and one of the three cores alongside the affordable housing and the demographic change. So now, as the Welsh Government letter alludes to and as you mentioned, we've got a significant proportion of Wales' best agricultural lands. We've got beautiful landscapes, including the protected areas in the National Park and the Y Valley AOMB and the Gwent Bubbles. But the data that was mentioned earlier from the Corrane Land Inventory from 2017 was saying at that time, 3% of the county is categorized as built on. We've done some calculations on the land take required by the preferred strategy with relatively low levels of density to make sure it's as accurate as we can be. And the land required for the housing and employment would take that figure to about 3.5%. So it's a very low proportion of the county, which doesn't mean, isn't to say that those sites aren't important, but it is proportionately extremely small. And we're here to use the plan to allocate those sites based on environmental quality, landscape sensitivity and ecology to make sure the best sites are chosen. And as Craig mentioned, planning policy is completely clear. Brownfield sites are preferred over greenfields. But as members will all agree and accept, we have very few brownfield sites to choose from. But we have had them come in as candidate sites and we're working through those. We need to make sure, you know, it shouldn't just be their brownfields that they're in. They need to be in the right location, you know, a sustainable location and not in a flood plain. So we need to look through those factors as well. Ultimately, though, we've got to get that balance right between the different aspects of sustainability, which is more than solely an environmental argument and more than solely an economic or a social argument. It's the four elements of environment, economy, social aspects and cultural aspects that we need to get the balance in place for. The starting point for that sustainable development in the climate emergency context is building in the right places, closely followed by building the right thing. So achieving the objectives of the sustainable and resilient communities preferred strategy that we put out there, you know, is built around those three core challenges of affordable housing, the demographic balance and climate emergency. But we're going to need some factors in the deposit plan in the next stage to make sure that happens. So we've got to make sure we allocate sustainably located sites, looking at the principles of 20 minute settlements or 20 minute neighbourhoods, prioritizing brownfield sites, as I just mentioned, looking at infrastructure to ensure connectivity and support the travel hierarchy. So minimize travel in the first instance, then walking and cycling as active travel, then public transport, then electric vehicles, then the private motorcar, non-electric down the bottom or non-ultra low emission down the bottom. Excuse me. We've got to look at the infrastructure to ensure connectivity and support that travel hierarchy in the Monmouthshire context. And then policies. So Craig talked about the briefing note around net zero homes and minimizing the carbon footprint of development and buildings itself. And then we've got tools like the, excuse me, the housing mix to ensure those those younger people can afford a market house and it's the right type, not just four bed execs. And within the planning policy framework, we have the integrated sustainability appraisal that sits alongside the LDP and make sure we meet those requirements. So against the climate emergency, but against the habitat regulations and all kinds of other legislation. We have a statutory duty to achieve biodiversity net gain. So it's not just about mitigation or staying equal. It's about positive improvements. And as I mentioned, we've got the climate change notes that we can make sure members are cited on if they haven't already seen it on the website, which sets up those future policies. And thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Mark. Councillor Sheila Woodhouse, if you'd like to come in.
Thank you, Chairman. We've heard an awful lot of information this afternoon at the High Time Offices and all the people who've come along, joined us this afternoon from in the public forum. So a lot of the questions I was going to ask have already been answered and we've heard, we've gone into this in great detail. So my question at the moment is, where are we going? You're going to bring back a report to councillor of the way ahead, how we proceed. I've heard numerous times this afternoon the word compromise. I've heard about how this LDP can be modified. So are we going to be able to enter into discussions now with Welsh Government and find a way forward? You know, we can all learn from this. If we can find a suitable compromise to bring back to full council is my question, really. What are the next steps? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Woodhouse. Councillor Grokot?
Thank you, Chair. It was very interesting comparing some of the comments from Mark Hand with those earlier this afternoon from John Keegan. And Mark saying that the new plan that we're talking about, he couldn't really legislate to stop the building of the four bedroomed houses that, to my mind, are the blight of Abigavenny at the moment. Whereas John Keegan was talking about the reality of life as it affects many of the people that I represent in my Lansdowne ward, where the majority of my casework is around the inability of young people to be able to find accommodation of their own. And it was interesting that Mark was saying that the need is that we have to have people moving in because otherwise we lack that age group that provide workers. And yet in my ward, as young people grow up and leave school, they also have to leave Abigavenny because they simply can't afford to go and find somewhere to live in their own town. And John Keegan was talking about the huge problems of people who are local people being unable to find somewhere to live. And so our loss of those economically useful young people is by and large in this part of the county, blinder Gwent's gain because they go to those heads of the valleys communities where they can afford to live. I would love to see a local development plan with, yes, smaller population growth planned, but from my perspective as a local ward councillor, 100% of that being affordable and indeed social housing. I've got two questions, Chair. One is, nobody has come back to the point that was raised by David Haswell early this afternoon about the promised green wedge review. And this is something I've raised on two occasions in Questions at County Council because the gap between the National Park on the edge of my ward and indeed the edge of your ward, Chair, the edge of Abigavenny and the National Park would seem to be almost ideal as a green wedge. Now, the Welsh Government has changed how they can be formulated. And reference has been made by councillor Taylor to the climate emergency. And national parks will have a real part to play in supporting an ecological contribution towards addressing the climate emergency. So my first question is, what happened to that green wedge review? And the second relates to that because one of the reasons I asked that question was that I know it's in the National Park and therefore doesn't affect our planners. But Monmouthshire Housing Association did put in in the National Park area, planning for a 150 house estate inside the National Park with no infrastructure for getting in or out of it. And that would have to go through my ward, which is already one of the most deprived in the county. And I have raised that issue of huge inappropriate population development. And the second relates to that, but broadens it out a little. And the extent to which, if we do carry on discussing our plan with Welsh Government, one of the other major areas for development in Abigavenny was the land at the side of the A465, down by Abigavenny railway station. Now, the problem is that goes ahead in any significant way at the moment is that it creates a new community cut off effectively from the town by the railway line. But is there not an opportunity here to work with the Welsh Government and to suggest this to the Welsh Government that here's our opportunity to create all sorts of exciting development possibilities, including addressing Abigavenny Station as a transport hub, which would address another of our climate emergency difficulties, which is the huge numbers of people who've moved into the four bedroomed houses that marked who've moved into the four bedroomed houses that Mark talked about and commute out on a daily basis. So what's happening in terms of the possibility of talking to the Welsh Government about developing, because it would need new bridges, new infrastructure, getting across the railway line to extend Abigavenny in a way that doesn't encroach on that national park, which to my mind is important. It was created by a Labour government after the first, after the Second World War for a very real purpose. And I don't want to see our developments impinging on the national park or indeed on land running up to it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Grocott. Perhaps Mark, if you could come into the stage?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. If I just cover those last couple of points from councillor Grocott and then Craig or come back in with the council of previous points that were raised by councillor Woodhouse? And in terms of the green wedge review, that's part of the information, the evidence that will inform the deposit plan. So I know David Haswell made the sort of a comment that he felt like it was being used as a mopping up exercise. That isn't the case. There's all kinds of other documents being prepared to inform the deposit plan. Including the renewable energy assessment by the Carbon Trust that looks at those land allocations or sites for promoting for renewable energy. All kinds of documents that will help inform which sites are allocated in the deposit plan and which sites are not. And so it's entirely appropriate that that's work in progress for the deposit plan. So the question, oh sorry, the answer to that question. Councillor Grocott, you have raised in council a couple of times before, is exactly the same as we've given before. It'll be part of the evidence to inform the deposit plan. And it will be there to inform which sites are allocated in the same way as other documents. So strategic flood consequence assessment will be one of those documents that will inform what's allocated and what isn't. Landscape character appraisals, all of those bits and pieces will come into the mix. In terms of Abigavenny East, I personally would agree. I think it presents some great potential opportunities focused around Abigavenny Station as a hub. But back to the point of this report, if we have a capped growth level as required by the Welsh Government officer letter, then there won't be any new sites allocated in the plan. Not for 100% affordable housing or for anything else. Or this site here. So I think if we just bring it back to the sort of where we are in terms of this report, that's just worth remembering. Site specifics from members about which sites are preferred and which sites aren't. I think that's all one for a future conversation, but I note the comments that councillor Grocott's made on that one. Likewise, the National Park site, I won't comment on that. That's not within our gift as a planning authority. Not within the gift of this committee. But it is, from my understanding, just a site that was put forward as a candidate site for consideration for their development plan in the same way as we've had lots of candidate sites put forward for ours. Some will be acceptable to us. Some won't. Some sites will be acceptable to the Brecon Beacons Park Authority and some won't. That's a matter for them them to consider. But as councillor Grocott knows as officers, we did object to that site in the national park for some of those connectivity and infrastructure reasons and access reasons that he alluded to. And I'll pass back to Craig to comment on councillor Woodhouse's question, if that's okay, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think just to pick up on what Mark said there as well in terms of the process and looking at individual sites. Mentioned Abigavenny A and Abigavenny B. I think members need to remember, we're not at that stage yet. We're at the stage of looking at what is the strategy that directly addresses Monmouthshire's key issues. So the issues that members have all identified as being appropriate there in Monmouthshire. And what is the level of growth and level of the strategy that actually addresses them? Deposit plan will clearly look at sites, look at which sites need to be green wedge, which sites need to be protected, which sites are the most appropriate to being forward for development. That is the next stage of the plan. So when we're looking at sites, I mean, part of the consultation responses for the preferred strategy, 57% of them related to one particular site. So I think we need to remember that this isn't about a particular site or a particular form of development. It is about a strategy for the council that addresses the issues. So I think members need to be mindful that we will have those detailed conversations about which sites are appropriate as part of the deposit plan consultation. We can look at whether certain sites are appropriate for different elements. In terms of councillor Woodhouse's comments with regards to what next, what happens now. That is really, really pivotal now in terms of how the council moves forward and how members want to move forward with the replacement local dwell plan. Is your plan to deliver? And what do you want to do with it? I think as officers, we need to have those detailed conversations with Welsh Government officials. We need to speak to them as officers and outline if there is a way forward in terms of the level of growth which addresses the local issues. Look at the test of soundness and look at our concerns as officers if we do go with Welsh Government's level of growth. And then think politically as members, you need to have those conversations potentially with politicians in the centre of as well in terms of the minister and looking to deliver affordable housing in Monmouthshire. How do we do that? So I think in answer to councillor Woodhouse's comments about what next, I think there's a lot of conversation, a lot of detailed conversations that need to be had. We need to reflect on members' representations today. We need then to consider and bring forward a paper to council, to full council, on how the council wants to move forward with options. So that's the next stage, I think. Detailed conversations with Welsh Government at both official level and political level. And then a paper back to council on the way forwards. And there's obviously a lot to think about just from today's conversations.
Right. Thanks Craig for that. I think we can move on now to councillor Phil Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, but just a couple of points to raise. I would be interested to know what the brownfield sites are. As John Keegan said, we we basically don't have any. And I suspect if we did have them, they'd be on the floodplain. So I don't know what we're going to do with those. One point that hasn't been raised up to now is the fact that we must have more houses just in terms of the sustainability of the county. And we must get more council tax in if we're to be able to maintain services at least to the standard that we currently are. And obviously we need to get more affordable housing to reduce the waiting list. We also need to achieve a lower demographic and get more jobs into Monmouthshire. But the point I wanted to raise was just clarifying the position over the proposed development company. Members are right, it was in 2018 that there was a proposal for Arms Length Development Company. But that was for market and affordable housing. The reason why we haven't progressed it is that we don't have a land supply until the outcome of the LDP and the growth strategies understood. We did in fact bring that to council. So people seem to have forgotten that we actually brought that up as a policy to park it up for the time being if that's not the the best way of putting it. However, we are working on a small site in Caldecott, which will be 100% affordable. So we are taking whatever opportunities we can get as they present themselves. But that Arms Length Company isn't dead. It's just it's just parked up until such time as the conditions are right for us to bring it back to life. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Murphy. councillor Anne Webb?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, Paul. Hello, everybody. I can't let this meeting go without just mentioning about affordable housing and the shortage there. It's a huge problem. I was quite involved in different ways in the housing in Broadstone, the six houses there. And also the three homes in Tinton, which have been really, and I think people have been there ever since they've moved in, there's been no movement at all. My answer to this is exception sites on the edge of villages, a few 10, 12 perhaps, homes on the edge of villages where the services are there. There's very often transport links, et cetera, et cetera. However, as David James can concur with me, there is huge local objection generally to people moving in into affordable homes. As Roger Harris, councillor Harris will remember, at one application meeting, there was the comment made, we don't want those people living near here. I think Roger will agree with me. People object strongly. It takes a long time to get planning there for. Very often we have to go to appeal. That takes two years or more. And so it's a really difficult problem. But for me, the answer, perhaps for another occasion to talk about this again, Craig and Mark, is exception sites on the edge of villages, hopefully that we can at least partly solve this problem. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you councillor Webb. councillor Louise Brown, if you've got a short question here?
Yeah, I think what I've heard is sort of a defence of the current strategy, which is the high growth strategy, which is obviously expected in terms of the, you know, the amount of time and officers work on this particular issue. But I still think that there's going to be a wide gap between that and what the response from the Welsh Government was on it. And I think that it hasn't, I don't think this report has addressed some of the issues that were raised by the Welsh Government. You know, for example, in terms of an innovative approach, they were talking about compost repurchase orders which would actually help make brownfield sites available. And in fact, housing associations are the people who are supposed to be dealing with what old council housing was dealt with by local authorities. And I think they're in a position to be able to get loans to work with the council on these types of things. On the employment side, for example, the Welsh Government response mentioned about the evidence not being robust enough. I mean, we relied on Edge Analytics, which basically said you build more houses and therefore you get more people with jobs. But that isn't necessarily where the jobs are located. And I can see that that would actually end up, you've got to have a job to have a mortgage. And therefore you'd be getting people who are commuting in and out, particularly from Bristol. So I don't think that necessarily solves the problem. And I think really we've got, instead of carrying headlong with the current thing, we've got to be looking at some sort of compromise that does provide more affordable housing, but in more innovative ways and discuss this with the Welsh Government. And I think that's the way forward because the danger is if we carry on headlong in the way that we are, then there'll be still that big gap between us and what the Welsh Government are actually saying. And the national framework, the national 2004 Future Wales Plan does apply to every local authority and we're not an exception to it. So we're not actually addressing that particular issue. So I think that we, you know, a lot more consideration has to be given as opposed to just defending more of the same really is my view on it. Because I think if we do look compromising some more that was suggested by councillor Woodhouse, I think that there's a better chance of the plan being accepted. And the point that was being made about green wedges, I do think it's important even before you consider sites to have green wedges because of the fact you lose the distinctive nature of communities if you don't have that definitely set out at the outset. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. Mark, if you'd like to come in and respond to that?
Yeah, thanks councillor Brown. It's probably just worth, I mean Craig's already talked about those ongoing discussions that we need to have with Welsh Government officers and and cabinet members will be having at a political level as well. So take that as a given, that we'll be working on that with the Welsh Government to see where we stand. I mean, back to the very first question, it was something of a surprise to have the letter from the Welsh Government and to have something so concrete as what's effectively a cap on growth in the county. So that's what we've been focusing our efforts on, understanding the implications of that. Whether we agree with the methodology behind that and how it addresses our evidence and the test of soundness. And comparing that with the preferred strategy. So we kept the report simple for members by just comparing those two scenarios. And asking members to consider, you know, does what the Welsh Government's asking us to do from their officer letter achieve what you want for your communities within the council area? Does it achieve your objectives? And we haven't tried to model any compromises or add anything different into the mix because I think that's all for a further discussion in the future and the next stage of discussion. As an option to consider with members and to map out what that means. But yeah, that's why it's solely those two scenarios at this stage and what the Welsh Government letter says versus the preferred strategy that we consulted on. You know, we've represented the objectives, the guidance on how you go about doing a plan and the test of soundness. And just keeping it simple to those bits at the moment. We're certainly not saying that we're an exception to Future Wales or that we should be. Not even disagreeing with the national growth area being Newport Cardiff and the valleys and the fact that we're outside of that area. What we're trying to say as officers and encourage members to consider is are those things actually mutually exclusive? Does us being outside of the growth area mean that it literally means the implications of what the Welsh Government letter has said? Or is there, you know, that middle ground or a different approach? And it comes back to that starting point of population projections that I won't rehearse again. The different ways of delivering affordable housing, the different funding streams available that councillor Brown alluded to. CPO powers, all of that's completely meaningless if we don't have any sites allocated in the plan. So it's got to be all of those things together. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Mark. councillor Bob Greenland?
Thank you, Chair. We've been going what, two and three quarter hours now, so I won't keep it too long, but I just wanted to make some points. First of all, what we're discussing here is a letter that was sent directly to Mark from Neil Hemington, the chief planner of the Government of Wales, not the government, the chief planner for the Government of Wales, who incidentally happens to be a resident of Abigavenny. And I'm sure if he was in council, he would have had to declare that interest, but I don't know what the rules are for the Welsh Government. But it is a difference, to be honest, between the the letter that we received and a meeting that I had just a few weeks ago with the minister. Because quite honestly, we have a lot in common with the views of the minister. The minister wants to see the delivery of affordable housing, social housing, housing for rent in particular. Because that's what we failed to provide in the past. And that's exactly what we want to do. That's where we see the real need in Monmouthshire to deliver that housing. We're online with the Welsh Government. And yes, we do want to use new innovative ways to make that happen this time. So and as Phil Murphy has just said, we were looking at a development company before. But unless we have houses coming forward to build, there's no point in having a development company or anything. And I want to just talk about numbers because I think we get a bit carried away with this figure of 7,000. But out of that 7,000, seven and a half thousand that is on the plan, whatever it is, we've already delivered 1,218 of those and a further 1,642 are there with planning permission and can realistically be expected to be delivered shortly. And when you boil down all the figures that Mark and Craig have given, what we're actually talking about is in terms of new housing allocations over the next 12 years, we're talking about 3,000 new houses approximately. Now, I don't think that's an ambitious plan. Personally, I don't think it's ambitious enough. Because a lot of those will be affordable, which we desperately need. We know we've got 2,700 households on our priority list for housing. Decent housing is not a privilege. It should be a right for everybody in a country as ours is, as prosperous as ours is. And I'm determined that we should actually do our very best to deliver those houses. And we will look at any way of delivering it. any way of delivering it. And I know that that's the same sort of view that the Welsh Government Minister has, which is why I was astounded when I read this letter. And yes, as Mark says, if we go by that letter, it does mean that we will be delivering no new housing allocations for the next 12 years. That is unbelievable. It can't be right. It cannot be right for any county. But for us, with this number of people waiting for houses, it would be criminal. Now, we as councillors will be asked to present a sound plan. I could not put my name to a development plan as the chief planner has suggested, which suggests no new planning applications. I believe that is an unsound plan, and I wouldn't be a part of it. What we have to do as a way forward is to recognise that the minister and we as councillors, and I'm interested to see that there's no political divide here, right across the board, we all have objectives which are similar. And we have got to be talking to the minister about this. In the meantime, officers need to be talking to officials in the Welsh Government. That's the way forward. The inspector, when it comes to the deposit plan, is independent. And one of the speakers today in their submission suggested that because in the last plan, the inspector listened mostly to the Welsh Government's view, who ironically wanted more houses than we were prepared to deliver, that the same thing will happen this time. They'll listen to what the Welsh Government have to do. Well, I don't think that's necessarily the case. But I don't want to get to the position where we do go into the next plan, the next deposit meeting, where we are at odds with the chief planner, let alone anybody else. So what we've got to do is we need dialogue to talk this through. And I know that officers will be doing that over the next few months. And I know that we as councillors, we as representatives of the people of Monmashia will be doing that as well with the people down in Cardiff Bay. So that is the way forward for us. And just finally, Chair, I just want to thank officers. This has been a roller coaster of a ride. I was irresponsible for the development plan the last time around. Last time around, it was nothing like this. It was a piece of cake compared with this, despite the fact that we had to have something like a 12-hour meeting to get the plan through. But this one really is just a different thing altogether. And officers have done a fantastic job for us in the way that we've been working here. Just finally, look, we heard from the people on the ground, John Keegan, David James, we know those people are out there. I actually met somebody last month, maybe, a window cleaner who is living in social housing in the county, two-bedroomed accommodation. He's got three children. He desperately wants a bigger house. He can't get one. He would like to, he's got, he's saved up enough money, he's worked hard, to actually put some money to have a shared housing scheme. But they're not there for him. He could then free up that social housing for other people. We have got to recognise the need in this county to provide housing. And it isn't going to come from using our county farmland either. Don't forget that where we can, where land has not got some possible potential for us, we do sell farms off when we are allowed to. And that money goes to the priorities that we've set so far for new schools. And we can be proud of the new schools that we've built in Monmashia. And we've not yet completed that programme. You can't use the money twice. But we will have to be innovative in the way that we deliver new housing, social housing in the future. But I'm glad to see that so many members are on the same lines right across the council. And yes, we'll be working to deliver for the people of Monmashia. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Greenland. Councillor Simon Howarth?
Yes, Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I just want to revert back to Anne's statement about exception sites. I think we have lost the focus on what we can do out there. I know it's difficult. In the last council, quite a few of us spent hours and hours and hours trying to come to some agreement on delivery of percentages for affordable homes, self-tenure. And when we took that to full council to adopt the LDP, we spent several hours trying to put the arguments over, which we didn't win. It's come back to bite us now. I'm really convinced that was a bad decision this council did in 2012. We now get a second bite of this. And I am pleased to say that I do believe that a lot of people out there, actually affordable homes isn't being classed as a social side of delivery. And in my backyard, I do get the impression out there, things are changing. We have delivered all my areas, national parks, where I reside and represent Monmashia. But as a corporate body, I do make decisions on the LDPs and planning, et cetera, within Monmashia. So I think we need to have a focus on exception sites. We shelved the company. Did we look at land which could have been used for exception sites as Monmashia County Council? We own masses of pockets of land which could have been looked at. I don't think we even looked at that. I think it was an easy cop-out for us to do that, to shelve it. David James, John Keegan, Melin Homes, all them bodies worked extremely hard in trying to deliver affordable homes within Monmashia and the outer areas. But it is difficult because of the land. The land bank needs to be explored even further, and hopefully we can achieve, for the aspirations of many of us here, delivering self-tenure and more affordable homes. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Simon. Roger Harris, please.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Bob. He's reading forward to what I said, that the response we got was from an officer of the Welsh Government, not the Welsh Government. And as I've said before, there is a vast difference there. And I agree with all your comments there. Let's just, with the good plans that we've got, we've worked hard on this, let's just send it back to Paul and see what response we get. Thank you, Chair. I've got to go now. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. And then I think finally, we got Councillor Sarah Jones?
Thanks, Chair. And I'll be brief because I sense you can conclude in the meeting now. But just to say, completely support everything that the councillor Greenland has said. Today's been a very, very useful meeting in terms of gauging some of the views and opinions out there. And clearly, there's a long way to go as part of this process. But today's been a really useful opportunity. I do just want to reiterate, and this is in my role as Cabinet Member for the Economy, and also as a mum of young children who's lived in Monmashia all her life, this has to be about our next generation, our future young people, and where they're going to live and work, you know, in the future in Monmashia. Now, we've got a Welsh Economy Minister who is incredibly supportive, and, you know, all credit to him, because I really do agree with the approach he's taking about trying to ensure young people feel confident to be able to stay in the local area, to plan their future in Wales, not having to migrate out of Monmashia or Wales indeed. So I think, you know, we have to remember, that's the Welsh Government's narrative. And it's something that I think is at odds with the sort of direction we've been receiving of late from planning within Welsh Government. So I think there's a lot of conflict here, but there's lots of opportunities for us to work in partnership and ensure that we meet the objectives of the Welsh Government on their economic development, and indeed more widely, because we know Julie James, for example, has a very strong opinion on affordable housing, as we already discussed in this meeting. So I hope to work in partnership, cross-party on these issues. And as I say, this is a first start in the process in terms of hearing views and look forward to working with members on this going forward and with the cabinet member, Bob Greenland.
Thanks, Sarah. Right, members, we've heard many different viewpoints today on this very important element of our replacement local development plan. And I'd like to thank members of the public for their written and verbal presentations that have informed members. There's no decision to be taken today, but members will consider the evidence that they've received today in future deliberations. I'd ask officers to take on board all the views expressed by public and members to see if any compromise can be achieved. And I'd like to thank officers especially for their presentation today and responding fully to the questions raised by members. And finally, thanks to everyone for attending. And I now close the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair.
Definitely thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chair.